Good morning Birmingham.
Good morning.
This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. It is August 27th, 2019. This morning for our invocation, we have Reverend Dr. David Craig, pastor of the Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, and Councilor Hoyt will do our pledge of allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
Good morning to the council, to Honorable Mayor Woodfin, and to our Council President Abbott, and to my district representative Alexander. We are glad to be here today. Let us pray. Father, we give you praise and glory and honor for who you are. We recognize that you are sovereign. Lord, that you rule and you reign. And Lord, we thank you for the city of Birmingham. We thank you to God for all these men and women who sit in the seat of authority and power to God to make decisions over our city. We pray now, Lord, for them, that you would give them wisdom and understanding to God and sound judgment. Lord, as they preside and make decisions concerning the citizens of Birmingham. And Lord, we thank you, Lord, for the blessings of this city. We pray for its continued prosperity, for those that would invest in this city, those that would, Lord, come and live in this city. And Lord, we give you praise for it. We ask your blessings right now, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Good morning.
Will you please call our roll?
Councilmember Alexander.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Hillier. Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Proton Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Woods.
Here.
President Abbott.
Present. Thank you. The minutes are not ready from our May 7th through August 20th, 2019 meetings. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Madam President.
How are you?
Morning to the council. Good morning to the public.
Good morning.
Madam President, I'll be very brief this morning. Couple notes. One is this is a reminder to each of you all that City Hall will be closed on Monday, September 2nd, for Labor Day. There will be no household trash, bulk trash, or limbs pickup that day. However, the makeup day for bulk trash and limbs pickup will be on Saturday, September 7. Tonight, August 27th, I will join Councilor Christopher Smithman for a District 6 Town Hall meeting at Moreton Conqueror's Church. Department heads will be present from 5:00 PM to 5:50 to answer questions from the public as we do with all of our Town Hall meetings. And then Councilor Smithman and I will speak to the residents at 6:00 PM. The UAB Blazers will return to Legion Field this Thursday at 7:00 PM. I hope to see all of you all present for their season opener against Alabama State University. Today, this morning, I am honored to have Birmingham native and filmmaker Jamel Lawan, if you can come on up with us. For three and a half years... Jamel has worked on a documentary about Dr. Richard Arrington, and how he became mayor following the fatal shooting of Benita Carter. Jamel made this film to educate others and also to highlight Birmingham's history. On Sunday during the Sidewalk Film Festival, Jamel made a significant accomplishment in seeing his first feature-length documentary, Iron Grit, win the audience award for Best Black Lens Film. What started out as a thesis for a project while Jamel was in film school in California has evolved into an educational tool that explores our past and looks at our present. Today, it is my pleasure to show you what happens when you don't give up on your dreams. Jamel, we want to congratulate you on a job well done, and kudos to all your future endeavors and work.
It's an honor to be here this morning. I'm on the City Council in the mayor of Birmingham. I want to first say thank you very much to the city of Birmingham for assisting in making this film. We were able to interview Mayor Woodfin here, who was also a part of the film, and we shot at multiple locations in the city of Birmingham. And the next thing I wanted to do is show appreciation for supporting Sidewalk Film Festival. That is a great thing that Birmingham has down there deposits. It's going to be great, not only for the arts, but for the people of Birmingham. I felt like I was in another city, being in that building this week. So I want to say thank you for that, because that's going to inspire the next generation of artists and filmmakers, as much as we need attorneys in Birmingham, engineers and doctors, a city culture is dependent on the art community, and that can inspire a world. And as much as this documentary was about David Van and Richard Arrington, it was just as much about the City Council, because both of them were all in the City Council first, and the film touches on how they worked together. And despite their differences, they came to sacrifice for the betterment of the city. And the old City Council chambers used to say, "Cities are what men make them." And I think today it would be, "Cities are what men and women make them." So what you guys do, your work every day, you think that it may not mean anything, but it can... You never know. We can look back decades later, someone will be inspired by your work. So I just want to say thank you all. Continue to give it back to the city of Birmingham. Continue to support the artists and filmmakers who are going to shoot here. I feel like it's growing in the southeast, and it's growing in Birmingham, Alabama. And I appreciate it every moment of it. All right, thank you.
Madam President, I have one last note, and that is to wish your colleague, all of your colleagues, Clinton Woods, a happy birthday today. He's probably mad because he didn't want to share that publicly, but don't be mad.
He's young. He's young. He's still proud of having those birthdays.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we... Well, we are ready for the consideration of the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Give me one second. All right, consent agenda. Let's start with page two. We have items two, three, and four on consent. Page three, items five, six, and seven are on consent. Page four, items eight, nine, and 10 are on consent. Let me skip over to page six. Items 14, 15, and 16 are on consent. Page seven, items 17, 18, and 19 are on consent. Page eight, we have items eight... I'm sorry. Items 20, 21, and 22 on consent. Items 20 and 22 were recommended by Budget and Finance. And then we have a correction on item 21 with the funding source. Please strike Councilor O'Quinn's discretionary fund and place in there 001-010-04200-527-014. That is 21. Item 21, Jefferson County Committee for Economic Opportunity. Strike Councilor O'Quinn's discretionary fund. Page nine, we have items 23, 24, and 25 on consent. Please note that 24 and 25 were on Budget and Finance, or approved by Budget and Finance. Page 10, we have items 26, 27, 28, and 29 on consent. 26, 28, and 29 were approved by Budget and Finance. Page 11, we have items 30, 31, 32, and 33 on consent. Page 12, we have items 36, 37, and 38 on consent. Page 13, we have items 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43 on consent. Item 44 should be withdrawn from the agenda. Page 14, we have items 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, and 50 on consent. Page 15, we have items 51, 52, 53, 54, and 55 on consent. Page 16, we have items 56, 57, 58, and 59 on consent. Page 17, we have items 60, 61, 62, and 63 on consent. Page 18, we have items 64, 65, and 66 on consent. And on page 19, we have items 67, 68, and 69 on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda, and we have one addendum item. I'm sorry.
Mr. Clerk? Can you repeat that? Seventy and seventy-one?
Weeds in the expense account.
Okay. Are there any council members who have items they would like to add or remove from consent? I would like to remove item 32 from consent, just so we can hear about that and the public can hear about it also.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilor Hoyt?
Yes, if we could remove item 21.
Twenty-one? Did you say twenty-one?
I did.
Item 21 on page...
Eight.
Eight is removed from consent. Any others? Seeing no names up on the speaker list, we are ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Your announcement.
Oh, my announcement. Yes, all items designated as consent are considered to be routine and non-controversial and will be approved with one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to their normal place on the Agenda Order of Business. All matters of permanent operation, those are the ones designated on the Agenda with a capital P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Is there anyone in the audience today who is here to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, Mr. Clerk?
One additional item is item 33. If we could remove that from consent.
On page...
On page 11.
Item 33. So item 33 is removed from consent. Do we have a motion to approve the...
Second.
Counselors Williams and Smithman?
Voting should be open. All right. That vote should be up.
That item passes. First item.
Should be item one. Item one, a public hearing of an appeal from T. Michael Brown, peeling the suspension of an application by Morning Star Storage to construct a mini storage building, a commercial office building, on property located at 1905 Richard Arrington Boulevard, Birmingham, and the Court of Ordinance Number 19-86.
Thank you. Councilor Hoyt?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This is a public hearing with respect to Morning Star Storage to construct a mini storage building, a commercial office building, on the property located at 1905 Richard Arrington Boulevard. In accordance to Ordinance Number 19-86, the clerk has already read it, but I just wanted, just to reiterate, what we're doing here is... The applicant, present? You want to approach the...
Good morning, Madam President. I'm the mayor, Councilman. Mike Brown, 1819 Fifth Avenue North. I'm here on behalf of Morning Star. I have with me the CEO of Morning Star, Dave Benson, the Director of Development, Marshall Makin, and Beau Reynolds, who is the manager of the Morning Star location on Montclair in Birmingham. As was Councilman Hoyt mentioned, the address of the property that we're dealing with is 1905 Richard Arrington Boulevard, which is on the corridor heading up through, from Homewood, back into the city before you crest the hill. It's on the over-the-mountain side of that. And basically, I've got a couple of...
Sir, you need to speak into the microphone. We have a handheld right next to you if you need to walk around. But you do have to turn it on.
Bed bottom.
I'll let him handle the mic. I'll speak into the microphone. Want to move through this and show you where the location is. I think everyone's generally familiar with this, but primarily want to show a few pictures of the corridor itself to show coming up, the property that our client purchased, Morning Star, has been vacant for over 20 years. And if you'll look at the area and are familiar with the area, on the 21st Avenue south side, on the corner of 21st Street and 21st Avenue on the south side is a Walgreens, which is in upper-right corner. Across from the Walgreens is the City of Homewood Board of Education. Then when you come back towards the city of Birmingham, you have several vacant locations. First, you have the gas station, which is pictured with the flags that are there. That's been vacant for quite some time. You then have the McDonald's, which was located there for quite some time, but has now been vacant for over a couple of years. And then the property next to it, there are two office buildings. One that is occupied next to our property, and then the property that we have, which is vacant. And then there's another office building on the other side of that as well. Wanted to walk through, I'm going to let Trey walk through for you, the steps that our client has taken already in purchasing and moving forward with, working with the city on the development of the site. They had received a number of the permits to move forward with the development of the site and have invested several million dollars in the site already.
Good morning, council. My name is Trey Oliver. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. As we're discussing, Morning Star has been involved with this property since the summer of 2018. They actually purchased the lot in September 2018, but from the time that they started looking into whether they should build a storage facility, they've been working with the city and Katrina Thomas on the plans to build the actual storage facility. After they purchased the property in September 2018, they then had to work with the Jefferson County to obtain a right-of-way deed in November 2018. After entering into that agreement, they then had a construction contract with a local contractor, T.E. Stevens, for close to a million dollars to work on the actual construction of the site, which you can see has already more or less been completed in the picture next to me right there. In February of 2019, they continued to work with the city and collaborate on this project. At that time, they entered into a special services agreement with the Waterworks Board, and they obtained an MPDES permit with the A-DAM. In total, they've worked with eight different agencies, and each obtained approval for the different steps that have led them to where the construction currently stands now. In March of 2018, the city formally approved the site plan. And as y'all probably know, the site plan lays out the approved use, which is a self-storage facility. This property is zoned for, is a B2 district, which one of the uses of a B2 district is a self-storage facility. And over the course of the nine months that we had been working with the city leading up to March, no one had ever said anything about there being an issue with the self-storage facility being put on this lot at that time. In May 2019, there were numerous permits that had been issued by the city, not including a stormwater permit, a driveway permit, a barricade permit, a clearing or earthwork permit, and a civil construction permit. One thing I want to mention is that not only has Morning Star taken this lot that is in a pretty tough topography, because it's on the hill that slopes upwards towards kind of the top of Red Mountain, but they worked to ease some of the citizens' stormwater concerns. And in getting the stormwater permit, they have moved the stormwater... They've moved the stormwater, which normally was discharging on the lower side of the property, across the street. And in doing so, they've expended a significant amount of money to do that. In addition, they worked with the Waterworks to extend the city water main up on the right side of the, down there, the right side of the property up top, and they expended a significant amount of money to do that. In June 2019, after all the permits had been issued, they then applied for their building permits. And on June 20, 2019, the city responded with just some general clarifications, asking questions about things like where would the trash removal and the trash services be located on the property. They were in the midst of answering those questions when the moratorium took place on July 2nd, 2019. There was another issue, I guess, later in July, and as you can see kind of on the bottom, this picture was taken, I believe, in, I think, July 15-ish. And in late July, there was some rebar and whatnot that was showing, and there was some concerns over the site, which has already been cleared, having erosion issues. And so because of that, the city granted, after the moratorium event in fact, a permit for a retaining wall to be taken into effect. We think that this appeal should be granted for a couple of different variety of reasons, but one of those is that the Morning Star has clearly gotten permits, and their rights are vested through those permits to build this project. Secondly, there have been several other appeals, which I'm sure y'all have been aware of, that have come before the city. One of them has had a very similar construction plan, and that the site had been cleared, and all they were waiting for was a building permit. And that was the Orange Storage 280 project, which was out on another corridor, which was a commercial corridor in the city of Birmingham. And that project was at the exact same spot, as far as construction standpoint, as this one is. And I think the city at that point found, at least on some levels, that some of its rights had been vested. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dave Benson, who is the CEO. I think he will be able to speak a little bit more about what Morning Star's plan is and be able to speak to why this project is not your typical self-storage property and why it can be beneficial to the city of Birmingham and the city of Birmingham's plan moving forward in the future. Thank you.
Just one correction. You don't turn it over. I asked him to speak, okay? This is a public hearing.
Yes, I apologize.
All right. Very good. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, counselors. My name is David Benson from Morning Star Storage. Couple of things I'd like to tell you a little bit briefly about Morning Star to give you some background on us, on our presence in the city of Birmingham, and then talk through a little bit about our experience in the storage industry, and then address, I think, three of the very good reasons why the moratorium was put into place, and then also give you some data points why we think actually that this is the kind of storage product and project that fits very well with the goals and the objectives that you've outlined for your economic development program. So first of all, we're in our 40th year of doing business as a storage company. We're only a storage company. We've been in Birmingham for five years. We've got a location on 1533 Montclair Avenue. I'll reintroduce Beau Reynolds. Mr. Reynolds is our general manager of the property. He's been running our presence here in the city since we acquired that property. He's a Birmingham native. And if you've got questions about how we interact with the neighborhood, who the customers we serve, where our business comes from, I think he'd be a great person to talk to about that. Look, as I understand, and we've been listening to some of the conversations around here over the past several months since the moratorium was put into place and the conversation leading up to that, that there's threefold reasons why, or that the moratorium is trying to address. First is that any future self-storage development supports and fits well into the plans that you've got for the city. I've heard several of you say that you're not against storage per se, but that it's got to be in the right place for the right purpose. Second, to try and protect the sense of place that Birmingham has in so many of its communities and neighborhoods, and particularly around landmarks. I think clearly that's very important for the discussion we're having today in our location. And then finally, the economic impact. And I've heard many comments about the fact that storage is not a sales tax provider or an employment tax provider, but we are a significant property tax provider. And I'd like to address a little bit of that and how we feel we do generate revenues for the city, and again, why we think it's important in that corridor. So a couple of reasons. Let me talk first of all about storage. So storage has changed, along with so many things over the last 20 years, is that the way people use storage, the kind of product that we're building, the things, the projects that you're seeing come in front of you that have actually elicited the response are significant and examples of changing in how people are using storage. Years ago, we all know, storage earned a very bad reputation for being on the edge of town in the industrial district, which is a row of metal garages. And maybe it had a chain-link fence around it if you were lucky, as a security system, but it was not attractive and not, you know, not a great service. Today, that's changed. When you look at our property on Montclair Avenue, 90% of our customers come within, or live within, one and a half miles of that property. So who we serve now are the local citizens, the local residents, the local businesses, who use us as a much less passive service than they did historically. This wasn't put grandmother's stuff in storage and come see it six months later. This is an active use where people have incorporated us into their lives, into how they use their residences, so much so that the industry is talking about a lifestyle storage rather than self-storage. So I understand that those are industry pundits, but you know, it is indicative of, I think, of how people are using storage. So let me give you an example of that. You know, I think that, you know, in the comprehensive plan in terms of future land use, one of the goals for Birmingham is to come up with, you know, dense urban communities, urban villages, if you will, that have retail, have residences, and have commercial neighborhood services near them. We serve that. As people move into those condominiums, into those apartments, into those smaller footprints, lifestyle is still important, you know, particularly if you talk about a certain millennial demographic. But the way people are using our storage is to augment that. They don't have room in that 800-foot studio apartment for their bicycles, for their tailgate equipment, for the UAB tailgate. I've seen pictures, I've not been to one, I've seen pictures of that. That's an impressive setup out there. But the fabric and the possessions of their lives don't fit in how they're doing that. So they need a place that is close nearby, doesn't necessarily have to be right next door, but within a commercial corridor that's relatively accessible to their residences. Let me talk about the businesses as well. Smaller footprint, high rent, commercial neighborhood districts. So when we're talking about small retailers, small businesses, small professional offices, they want to have that presence on that main street, that storefront, but it's expensive property. So what we provide nearby is a service that allows them to, very economically in support of having that position and that presence, have a back office, store their legal documents, store their excess restaurant equipment, store their inventory upcoming for, you know, the Christmas holidays, how that may be. So it's a different user today for storage. And again, it is, we feel like that, one, we are hearing from our customers that the closer we are to them, we don't have to be next door, we don't have to be able to walk down the block, but within a reasonable mile of, amount of distance from that, again, you know, over on Montclair Avenue, and this is consistent on many of our denser urban sites, 90% of our customers come from within a mile to a mile and a half radius of the store. So a little bit about the use of storage. Now let's talk about sort of the commercial corridors and why we think Richard Arrington Boulevard is an appropriate use for that. So this is currently a commercial corridor. It is a connector. You know, again, reading through the comprehensive plan, these commercial connectors are very important in terms of providing services for the denser neighborhoods that they ultimately either deliver traffic into or that they can serve. So the five points, for example, UAB, that are at the bottom of the other side of the hill here, you know, this is a very close proximity for us to serve those markets. Do we have to be in there? Do we have to be right next door? No. Do we have to be nearby? We believe so. The other thing that, why we, first of all, this is a vacant site. So clearly, it was attractive to us to zone correctly. And in our discussions with the city and staff, felt like this was an appropriate place, first of all, the buyright use, but also for the other conditions that I mentioned. It's a high-traffic road. It's currently a traffic count of about 21,000 cars a day. And sometimes during the day, we can, you can walk, you know, walk across the street with no problems. At other times, it's very, very busy from a traffic standpoint with the cars coming. Obviously, this, top of the hill, bottom of the hill, where the traffic comes pretty quickly down there. The, the, the other thing that I'll mention just in terms of our location on the commercial corridor is one of the things that the comprehensive plan talks about is that, one of the findings was that blighted, vacant, and empty commercial properties are barriers to that development of that transit in between neighborhoods and a barrier to the sense of building community. So this is a quarter that has not seen, as far as I know, any development or any significant renovation or repair for over 20 years. Anecdotally, I've heard it's been much longer than that. But we feel like we are bringing a new investment to this quarter, hopefully a little bit of a pioneering move to help jumpstart future development here. You can see the nature of our building, the investment we're making, over a $10 million investment in the corridor. Again, hopefully, we think that that will get people to pay attention that this is a viable corridor for future development. And then finally, some of the technical aspects about why this may not favor itself as well as others to the kind of walkable dense community, or, excuse me, urban community that is particularly called out in the ordinance. In the plan, the plan identifies, again, this is the future use plan of the, part of the comprehensive plan, identifies what are the ideal aspects of a walkable community. And typically, that is, it has the retail services, it has the residences, it has structurally blocks that are less than 600 feet in length. So the stretch from the bottom of the hill here, again, just to the crest of the hill and not to any other intersections, is almost 1,400 feet. So there currently is no sidewalk in place. I understand that there may be a plan to put a sidewalk in there. I think that that would be great. It still does not quite fit the ideal walkable neighborhood that, you know, again, that is discussed and identified. We think they're nearby. But again, that's why we think that this is a good location for us, because it doesn't impinge or take other space out of those areas, but is a close enough proximity and puts development into a commercial quarter that is, that is well-suited and well-located to serve those quarters. Yeah, a couple of other things about the sighting. So first of all, you all know the nature of the land there. So we sit at the bottom of, you know, my term, a canyon, but with significant hills on either side, which limit the view corridors, limit the visibility from either side. In addition, as Mike is showing, there is a significant buffer there between, between our building and the property line behind us, the residences behind us. So a couple of things we did there. First of all, we've got 60 feet to the end of our property and then another 50-foot buffer. We pulled our building as far forward as we could on the property to make sure we extended that. So we got as close to the street as we possibly could to minimize the impact on the residences behind us to maximize that buffer. The other thing is if you'll, if I can show the elevation again one more time, Mike, is that we know there's been other projects proposed in this corridor and that, and that have been significantly opposed for various reasons. One was a 75-foot building, a seven-story building. We have reduced the height here, so we are well below the allowable, the maximum height in the area. So if you look at it, this is, it is a multi-story building, built back into the hill. It's four stories at the facade, you know, hopefully to address some of that size and scale to make it both appropriate for the corridor, but not too obtrusive to any of the other uses around at the park on one side and the residences behind us. And finally, let me talk a little bit about economic impact. So several comments that have been made about storage generally that are absolutely true. We do not bring a big workforce. So we will, here at this location, employ three to five at any given moment. So that is not an office, that's not a retail store. We don't, we're not going to generate the payroll taxes. We're not going to generate the sales taxes that other uses and other, say, an office might or a retail store might. What we do do is generate property taxes. And so it's my understanding that 70% of funding for the city of Birmingham comes from property taxes. This parcel currently contributes $2,000 annually. Based on the millage rates and the value of our investment, that this property will contribute $150,000 in year one for property taxes. And obviously, that will be in place as long as the property is in place. And my experience is the property taxes go up. So we'll be, you know, an increasing contributor through the years. The other thing that is a little counterintuitive about what we do is that we contribute those, and again, it's a little, bear with me on this argument, but we contribute those taxes without a subsequent burden. What I mean by that is if we had 20 individuals that were working in here, a very positive aspect, I understand, but there would also be load on schools, on trash pickup, on all those other kind of things. So this net 150 is a big contributor without additional burden to the city. So storage, the investment actually produces, I think, a very good return in terms of revenues that then become available. And then finally, where do we impact? I'd go back to where we talked about or started in the beginning around who do we support? We support our local, our customers are local, they're businesses. You know, we do allow those businesses to be able to locate here. It's an important ancillary service, warehouse, inventory, back office for them that allows them to have a presence in these urban communities with a very economic base. So we feel like indirectly, I don't want to say that we're bringing them here, but is one factor that helps make it an attractive environment in these urban villages for them to locate into. I will stop there, and I'm glad to take any questions. Again, Bo runs our operations here. Some of the things we do as a company is that we contribute 5% of all of our units to local charities. So Bo can run through some of those who we serve at, on Montclair Avenue. But those would be all local city of Birmingham charities. We feel like that's important for us to be good stewards of our position in the community. He can talk about our customer base. Any specific questions about the conversations that we've had to date around permitting, zoning, use, conversations with the city? Marshall, our director of development, has certainly been very closely involved with those. So thank you for your consideration. I understand the point and the direction of this moratorium. We, as I said, have been in this business for 40 years. We've seen a lot of unthoughtful storage development. We are not responding to a current phase or a current craze. This is what we do. We want to build a property and a project that we will be running and will be relevant 40 years from now. And I hope you will take into consideration the thought we put into not just the product and the appearance, but the location. And we're welcome to answer any questions that you've got.
Very good. Counselor John Halya. And I guess, counsel, if we could, so do you have anyone else to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. I think you mentioned something about the charity. You want to come and give us those charities?
Bo, do you want to come and just say a little bit about who we see now?
Thank you, counsel. My name is Bo Reynolds. I've actually grown up in Alabama, went to Homewood High School, lived over in Homewood for years and years. That's where we had our first base. So we live out in the Irondale area now. And I've been working with Morningstar for five years. Started in January of 2015. The charities and the things that we do, it changes year to year to some degree. But we work with Girls Rock, for example. They have, they store, they do camps for girls for music. They teach them how to write music, teach them how to perform. They do rock and all kinds of stuff. And with performance, they go through dance, they go through the whole nine yards. We've worked with different schools throughout the year, Shades Valley being one, St. Francis Assisi being another school that we worked with. We supply storage when they do their raffles and that sort of thing to help them get moving there. We've had the, the breast implant people were there with us for a number of years, off and on when they do their runs or whatever they're setting up for. We allow them to do that as well. It's just incredible what all we do. It's more like, what do we not do if somebody has a need? We work with churches. We've done all kinds of things off and on, helping churches put together garage sales, giving a place for our collection to happen where they can bring it in and put it in and itemize it, price it, and put it back out. We also do a lot of things with our small businesses that store with us. I have one that is a moving company that stored with us since we opened. And they've been with us now for a total of seven years. And this, this business started with two people and one little pickup truck. And now it's got 12 employees and several moving trucks that they help citizens all around the state get their things and get it where it needs to go. We have small shops all through Mountain Brook, all through Crestline, and all through our side of town. From decorating to just anything you can imagine ends up being, we'd be their back warehouse.
All right. Well, thank you kindly. Are there any other members of the public which should speak to this item? You're welcome to come to the podium. And that's either for or against.
Mayor Woodfin, council president, advocate, members of Birmingham City Council. My name is Don Long. I'm a retired lawyer in Birmingham. I and my wife, who's a retired university professor at the medical school at UAB, have lived on Warrick Court South for many, many years. It's a wonderful place to live. Birmingham's a wonderful community. And we've enjoyed very much being in that location. I want to start by thanking the members of the county, the mayor and the members of the council for their consideration of ordinance 1986 and specifically getting underway a process to look at the impact of storage facilities on our communities. Storage facilities are one of the probably most sought-after and currently being developed commercial business facilities across the United States. And they're having a real impact on communities. And they're very much different from the normal commercial development. As was stated at the earlier session in July when the ordinance was adopted, they're appropriate in some places and other places they're not. And we need to look at all of the different aspects and determine where are the appropriate locations and conform ordinances in zoning and planning to accommodate that. And they are different from other commercial facilities in two important aspects. The city of Birmingham lives on its revenue. Much of that is from occupational tax. Much of it is from sales tax. As Mr. Benson pointed out, this facility will employ three to five people. The occupational tax revenue from the facility will be minimal. But the facility doesn't sell anything. It does not have items for sale. And the sales tax revenue from this facility will be $0. At the hearing when the 1986 ordinance was adapted, this body heard from one of our wonderful local restaurateurs, George Saris, who operates the fish market here in Birmingham. He looked over his records for the last 10 years and in a facility, square footage and size perhaps comparable to what we're proposed here by Morningstar, seven, no less than $750,000 in sales tax revenue to the, to the city of Birmingham.
Sir.
As was pointed out.
Sir. That's, that's your time. But I'm going to suspend the rules to give you one more minute. But those will come in. You have three minutes to speak. That's the mantra of our public hearing. So if you would, wrap it up.
Sure. I'd be glad to, I'd be glad to do that. The point here is the council and the mayor very wisely have started a study. No building permit has been issued on this project. It needs to be in the same status as other projects which have come before the committee. There were a number of those at the earlier hearing. People had bought property to build a storage facility. They had made invested, they had made investments. But the zoning law needs to be refined and, and, and edited with respect to the unique requirements of storage facilities. And this process needs to continue forward. Four and a half more months to go on the moratorium. Let's continue to keep the pause button pressed on this project so that the study can be completed and the plans of Morningstar can become part of that. Morningstar, to my knowledge, never contacted the Redmont community, developed the Redmont Neighborhood Association, never asked to appear, never told us anything about the project, never talked to us about the project. And this is where we are today. If community presence is important, let's get a dialogue going with the neighborhood and the developer. And let's carry the process forward while the planning is going forward on the council level to look at these developments and to fit them into the dynamic and prosperous city that Birmingham is. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Good morning, honorable city council members, president and chair of this hearing. I am Sheila Chaffin. I live at 1309 19th Street South, Birmingham. I own two bed-in breakfasts that would be north of here after you go down the hill in and around Ramsey High School. For many years, I was executive director of campus planning at UAB. Now I'm retired. I'm an architect and city planner. So saying those things as introduction to some of the comments. I have two areas, please, to address the board. The first would be what the moratorium is trying to do and how that applies to this property, property, since that's the essence of this hearing. Second, to make some recommendations from observing the site and what is going on as to what should happen if you deny their request and we're moving forward and it's then tomorrow. So on the first part about the moratorium, it has, of course, to do with, do we have too many self-storages? Are they in the right place? Do we have too little and so forth? Great cities like Birmingham is going towards, or not yet there, but that's a big objective we want to hit. That is our goal. They usually focus on their best physical assets so that when a person remembers the region, visits, lives there, that is the big impression they have. Rio de Janeiro has the Christ figure up on the mountain. Paris has the Eiffel Tower. We're trying to do that same thing with our Vulcan monument, that's a big thing for us. In Birmingham, we have seven hills. Notice that in antiquity, that was noticed in the creation of Rome. Rome has seven hills. On those seven spots, you'd be very, very careful what you put there as they noticed two thousand years ago and coming forward. In our city, if you're north side, coming across the rail, we're looking down towards Red, Red Mountain, the first high point or the first hill is the U A B freshman residence hall area. That would be roughly Ninth Avenue to Tenth, Sixteenth to Seventeenth Street. That is a high point. And so U A B and the master planning was very careful what to put there. The second one is Quinlan Castle, owned now by Southern Research. So that is Richard Arrington, as you know, in around Ninth Avenue. It has a little bump like that, so we have an interesting facility there. The third is Ramsey High School, Thirteenth Avenue, I would say Nineteenth Street, right there. Then the next one would be where the Western Market has been, that is now transitioning to a quality development at Twenty-second Street, Highland Avenue. The next one is the club. Looking up and you see the white serpentine figure up there. And then finally this, this one is the sixth. Put yourself as though you're driving a car, you're coming in from Homewood side, going towards Vulcan, what do you see? It's been mentioned nowadays, you see a Walmart to the right, Board of Education to the left, you continue past, and then this sticks right out, it's right there, it's that saddle, it's the valley floor, but that's the sixth spot for entry into visibility of Birmingham aesthetically. And then finally, the seventh is on top of the hill.
Sheila, that's your time.
Thank you.
And I'm going to give you a minute to wrap it up.
Okay, the wrap-up goes like this.
All right, I'm intrigued, you know, I'm engaged about the points, the seven points.
Thank you, sir. Well, then applying all that to this site, very visible, very prominent. What happens here will influence up and down, right there on that view corridor, number six. They've established bulkhead retaining wall as described. They did some hydro seeding initially, they've been backing into the hydro seed, doing the stair stepping of the excavation. I would recommend you deny their appeal, that the moratorium goes on, which will be the master planning, rezoning, various changes to a number of sites, this area in particular, I believe. Their site should basically, after the moratorium is lifted, I would recommend they reconsider what they're doing on the site, stop the self-storage, keep the retaining wall, major construction has happened. Also retain the sewer and outfall arrangements as to flooding coming off the hill. There's a number of things their site could be redesigned to be appealing, produce a profit for the developer, just get rid of this land use in their future plans. So if you deny them, they should be redirected to hydro seed, freeze it as it is, so the runoff does not get worse in the ensuing few months until this is settled. So just freeze them, they would then have all land rights to redo their site in a more conducive way to the character. Thank you so much for listening.
Okay, let me ask you a question, because I'm, I'm trying to put this in my mind. Is this where, was it the McWayne thing used to be on the, on the hill? Is that, that's, that's not between Red Mountain and, I guess?
This is right below Vulcan, Highway thirty-one, the four lane that we're going to turn into a two lane with our lands, our redo that we've got in.
Got apartments now?
No, there are no apartments there. It was a vacant piece of land, there's some office buildings.
Huh. Oh, oh, where the McDonald's?
It's up the hill, right next to that single story, maybe two-story building that has a big billboard sitting next to it.
Right.
Right before you come around and see Birmingham. If you're coming from Homewood, you're coming up the mountain.
Okay.
And there's a big mud hole there and that's where their.
On the right-hand side?
That's where their, their project is.
But McDonald's used to be where?
Well, it's up the hill from McDonald's.
Up to here.
Used to be grass and trees there.
I was trying to find the attachments so I could look at the site plan. But, thank you, next speaker.
Hello, good morning, City Council. My name is Jean Jacques Godell, I'm a resident of Birmingham. I came here forty-five years ago and from France, as you can probably say, and I've lived in that neighborhood for about twenty-five years. My house is located basically very close to the, to, to, to the building site. My house is in yellow here with another building here, my property line is right here and their property line is here, which means it's fifty feet, just a yellow and white away. Their property is fifty feet from mine. Now, at first I opposed the project because I didn't want a seven-story building, see the top of it from my backyard, that's a selfish concern. My concern has increased considerably over the last two months as we have been digging and digging and digging into that hill. They are digging very close to that property line. Now, that whole area is a slide zone and my concern now is that they are building a forty-foot cliff, fifty foot from my property line. Now, in California, they slide into the sea, it's not going to happen here, but my concern is my house may eventually slide down the hill or at least my other building here might, which is on a very steep slope, if they build a cliff here, what's going to happen to the, to the earth, basically? I mean, there is a chance of slide and I don't think that had been brought up before and I didn't know it was going to be brought up because the land sloped smoothly. But in the last two months, if you drive by there, they are digging into that hill and they have literally a straight cliff being built, I don't know exactly how far from the property line, but it's awfully close. So I'm very concerned about this. That's all I have to say. I would like an answer from them actually as far as how far they are planning to dig and how close to the property line.
Yeah, let's hold that until we've heard from the other speakers, those.
Okay.
And then we'll bring them back up and they'll write a little note and they can answer your questions. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Elizabeth and I live at nineteen fifteen.
Can you speak into the mic?
My name is Elizabeth and I live at nineteen fifteen Twentieth Avenue South.
Okay.
My first question is for that, Mr. Reynolds, when he talks about charity, I hate to be rude, but when you talk about breast implant people, I don't know what that means, so you probably should clarify a little bit what breast implant people means when you talk about charity. We talk about bettering the city and wanting to improve walkability and entertainment and excitement and people visiting in our, our city and we want to put a storage unit next to the monument that people come to visit? Shouldn't there be something there? And you said something about the Red Mountain Museum that used to be in the general area and I think really we should devote more time and energy into putting things that people want to visit in that area. It is the entrance point into going into Birmingham. We could increase walkability with sidewalks from Vulcan Park or Vulcan Trail, Vulcan Park to other areas. And if we put a storage facility, who's going to want to come there? Who's going to want to walk around the city with just storage buildings? That's what I have to say.
All right, well, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Darlene Negrotto. I serve as President and CEO of Vulcan Park Foundation, Vulcan Park and Museum, which we operate on the city's behalf. We're located at seventeen oh one Valley View Drive. We serve as a symbol of the city of Birmingham. Vulcan has stood as a symbol of who we are as a people for generations, for a hundred and fifteen years, and he will stand for many, many generations to come. We see over one hundred and fifty thousand visitors from around the globe, literally, every fifty states, every one of the fifty states in a year and generally over seventy-five countries in a year, which was astounding to me when we first opened. People equate Birmingham with what they see, with what they experience at the park and we work very, very hard to maintain that park as a beautiful reflection of who we are as a community. That corridor serves as a key entrance to the city of Birmingham. It's a stunning view. If you've been to other cities, you know that, excuse me, that your impression of a city relies greatly on your first impression, what you think about that, that city and its people. That corridor can become something beautiful and with the road diet that is planned along Arrington Corridor, it will become even more of a pedestrian-friendly area. We have spoken against other projects similar to this. The developer has neglected to mention that he was located directly across the street from Vulcan Park and Museum. And we have, as other speaker has said, we have heard nothing of this project until it started construction and we found out about this opportunity to speak yesterday afternoon. So we're very pleased for this opportunity for you to consider this moratorium and to maintain the moratorium against this development. One of the things that the developer has mentioned in today's presentation is that the activity around storage facilities has changed over time. And one thing that we had heard when we went to the zoning board before was that people put their things in storage and they don't come back to get it. That means that there's less traffic. With what the developer said this morning, that people access it on a weekly basis, that's more traffic on Arrington. Twenty-one thousand cars and a road diet, we don't need that kind of additional activity along that roadway. And it's a very dangerous roadway as it is now. People do walk it without a sidewalk, they ride bikes on it without a sidewalk. And when it becomes pedestrian-friendly, we really look forward to some development along there that will be far more appropriate and engage with those pedestrians. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And sir, if you want to answer the gentleman's question, oh, oh, come on, sir. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam President, members of the council. I'm Steve Alexander. I live at twenty-eight forty-five Argyle Road in the Redmont neighborhood in which this project is being developed. But I'm here today in my capacity as the chairman of Five Points Alliance, where I have my law office and where I go to church and spend most of my days. Our alliance is on record against the development of self-storage units along this property and my wise counsel would be that our first speaker's request be, be taken under advisement. He makes a good point. This project's not so far along that they have incurred anything that they could not make something else out of. And it should be considered along with the moratorium that you so wisely undertook this summer to reassess any development in all of this. These people, if a self-storage unit is developed, I seem to think that these folks would be the ones to do it, I know they've got a good lawyer, but that's not necessarily the development that should be on this site. We would welcome them to look at other sites in Five Points and other parts of our beautiful city, but it really isn't the thing that's complimentary to the symbol of our city on our official seal along the driveway that people come into Birmingham from Homewood on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then we're going to hear from Councilor Hillier.
Well, thank you and I certainly appreciate the sentiments and some of the questions. Let me see if I can answer, maybe not necessarily in order. I'll start with maybe the constructions question around the slide and the hill and then work through some of the other ones.
Erosion and all that stuff, yeah.
If I could have the other site plan, might you might? So I can put this here with the hopes of maybe anybody can see it. So in terms of the location.
I think they had the cameras on, so you can turn it this way.
Okay, thank you. That's accurate, there is a fifty-foot buffer in between the residential lots and our property line. As I mentioned, we have pulled the building as close as we can to the street to allow for an additional sixty feet, so it's actually a hundred and ten feet from the residential property line to our structure. All of that is undisturbed and will remain undisturbed. So that is, we have not turned a shovel there, we have not taken down a tree outside of the, the environs of the building that you see. The, the, as the excavation as it stands was part of the construction process, so it certainly was never meant to be left exposed. We, as part of the idea of, again, diminishing the facade of the building to try and make it of a scale that would fit in the corridor, along with future development as well as the existing multi-story buildings that are in there, we lowered that and built it into the hill. So rather than building it on top of the hill or on top of the side, we're actually excavated so we could help hide the building. And again, we never meant to leave that hill exposed as it is, it was part of the construction process, was, would be secured. So we've got, worked very closely with engineers into the soil quality, what's behind there, the presence of rock. It is currently stable. We're certainly not doing it flippantly or without direction of professional engineers on how and where to excavate that, to get that done. But I hope that alleviates some of your immediate concerns. It's, it, again, it was not designed to be left exposed and so that, that could be an issue as we, as we move forward. A couple of other questions about the Vulcan corridor. I, we, we do not take the location lightly and I actually, I said, I meant to address when I first started that I think one of the things that I think is so impressive about the comprehensive plan and the drive behind the moratorium is the initiative and the thoughtfulness going into, you know, where these should be located and why they should be located. We actually think that, you know, again, if you look at the design of our facade, the storage use is a benign use and we can go into many issues there. The appearance, reputationally, historically, has been well-earned and not very good. I would argue that the building that we're proposing looks very much like an office building or any other commercial building which would go into this corridor. So except for the sign that says Morningstar Storage rather than some other, it'll be indistinguishable for any of the office buildings or any of the other commercial buildings further down the hill. So as an obtrusive use, I think we've worked very hard to try and fit into the nature of the corridor, not despite its location, but recognizing the location of importance as one of the few entryways into the city of Birmingham. Again, you know, one of the things, we prefer to go into areas that have more robust development around us. So we see this as an opportunity, first it was zoned correctly, allowed our use, but also as to be a bit of a pioneering investment in a corridor that, again, we recognize is important to the city. So by bringing this investment here, again, with the possibility of removing some of the barriers at the comprehensive plan sites, blighted and vacant existing commercial properties, by putting investment into the corridor, I think that there is some argument to be made that if we do this, we will attract other people to come to this corridor with similar investment on a significant scale appropriate to the location. The, 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 the location to the, to the park itself, it's a beautiful park, I love it, I wish we had something more akin to that in Charlotte with the investment that the city has done. The entrance to the park are on either ends of this corridor, so down on Valley View is a very beautiful entrance and also the new, the parking lot and the access to the Kiwanis Trail on the, on the side. So I feel like we are well-located in between those two entrances that don't impede, distract or hinder any sort of access to the park as it now stands.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilor Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was just, I was just curious to know, how much have you invested in this project at this point?
So today we've got two point six million invested and spent, along with our economic impact, you know, we, we are employing Birmingham contractors, so T E Stevens of Birmingham is doing the civil and the site work, Murray Building of Birmingham is also doing the construction work. We expect that to be sixty to eighty construction jobs over the course of twelve to fourteen months of our construction. But to date, we have over two point six million dollars spent and invested.
Had you started this project before the moratorium?
Yes, sir, we had. So we had, we began conversations with the city and the process, the permitting process, prior to our purchase of the site in September. We, immediately after, we entered the process, starting with the sewer, stormwater and so forth. We would submitted full plans for, we had site approval that allowed us to start here, both with the design and the use. We had submitted building plans, which we received back, comments on June twentieth with, I think, three clarifying questions about the zoning question was, and the use question was around the location, was our dumpster located on the side of the building or not? It was difficult to tell from the elevation that we supplied. So very minor comments that we felt we were, we certainly were not complete, but we felt we were very well through the, the process as it stood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Council President Abbott.
Thank you. I, I appreciated the depth of your presentation and the one thing that struck me was that the work that you have done thus far would have to be done for any development, if you were putting, I think you're, you say you're building an office building and storage here. If you were building just an office building, all of this would be required for that project also. I read the documentation y'all left for me yesterday and it led me to believe that you have no idea that the city has a project underway to narrow thirty-one down to a two-lane road and put in sidewalks and bicycle lanes on this road. So this inaccessible, unwalkable place is soon going to be exceedingly accessible and very walkable. That will be the intention of the city is to allow people to walk and cycle over the mountain, either way. We want all the people from Homewood to ride their bicycles to Five Points South and the Vulcan Trail and then we want to go over to Homewood and visit them sometimes. So I'm surprised that you are unaware, but I guess being from North Carolina, you might not know what's going on in Birmingham, but this is a major project and part of it is to connect to the Vulcan Trail, which has just been extended with the help of the Kiwanis Club for their centennial project. So the idea is to make this a vibrant area and self-storage is not vibrant. I think you have admitted that self-storage is not vibrant. It may be a lot of other things, it may be useful, but it's not vibrant and it's not going to add to the walkability, it won't give anyone a destination to go to unless they want to carry their stuff home on their back or on the back of their bicycle. So this is a major project for Birmingham to try to deal with the very problems that are mentioned. Obviously, across the street from you is Vulcan, which is the symbol of our city and thirty-one is a beautiful entrance to Birmingham. My thought, my personal thought is just that this site would be. My thought, my personal thought, is just that this site would be, it, there's a, there's a better use for it than self-storage, to my way of thinking, and especially considering the city's multimillion-dollar project to make this a walkable area. So those are just some, some thoughts I have, and I assume that you had a geotechnical engineer tell you that the site would not slide down the mountain. So, uh, but we've had that happen before, and the, and the site slid down the mountain anyway. Um, my other concern is that there has been no community involvement in this. Y'all didn't visit with the neighborhood, or tell them what you were doing, or show them any pictures.
Rules to spin the rules.
This is the first-
I'm sorry.
Well, I'll just be quiet because I'm a stickler for the, I'm a stickler for the rules, Counselor Hoyt, and so I'll just quieten down now and see if anyone else has any comments. Thank you. Thank you for, be it your willingness.
I'm trying to employ some balance. Um, Counselor Quinn?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, so my question is related to, uh, a point that Counselor Abbott just made, and something that was stated in, in your plans, that, um, states quite clearly that the planned use is, or maybe I'm just misinterpreting, but you know, the, the term "office building" is repeatedly come up in the description of what this is. Is that just a aesthetic description, or is there actually any office functionality being programmed into the planned construction?
No, sir, my comments did not mean for them to be misconstrued if they were, is that my, my point that I was trying to make was that this had the appearance of any other commercial building in the corridor, including office buildings.
Okay.
It is a storage building, and we have a office component that is our, what we call our retail office. We do produce some small sales out of there of moving supplies and boxes and so forth, so there is a little bit of tax income, not, you know, not, not much that would sway, um, this body. But I did not meant to intend or imply that this was an office building. It is a storage building. Uh, my comments are around how it looks and how it fits in with the rest of the fabric of the community.
Okay, so, um, my other, the other, I just have a couple of other comments that I want to bring to the council's attention. I do think this is, this is a major gateway for the city of Birmingham, um, coming from Homewood, the Homewood side especially. Uh, I want to point out that, that Homewood is, is actively planning for, uh, major changes along 18th Street. Um, there's a hotel being built there, uh, in downtown Homewood. They're going to be reconfiguring 18th Street. Uh, they're going to be connecting, uh, a greenway up to this area, um, to connect with the eventual, uh, multi-use path that's going to put, be put on Richard Arrington Boulevard. I also bring to your attention that this is now a significant transit corridor. The Magic City Connector has recently been extended, uh, from Five Point South into downtown Homewood. So there, there's bus service that passes through this corridor, uh, every 15 minutes, um, and so this could be, you know, a significant, uh, transit stop here. Um, and, and it definitely has the, the potential to be more than just commercial office space, um, in this area. Obviously, you know, you have to have, uh, some vision to be able to, to, to see that capacity there, but, um, I certainly think that this is one of the locations in the city of Birmingham that, um, is a gateway currently. Uh, it has a lot more capacity to serve as, uh, an entranceway to, to the city of Birmingham. So, um, my personal feeling is that we have some, some thoughtfulness and caution as we proceed. Thank you.
Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, briefly, like I said, I am, I guess, sensitive to the investment that you guys have made. Um, I do think that you've taken some steps to, uh, make this aesthetically pleasing. Um, you know, and as it stands today, I think I'd be inclined to support it, but hearing a little bit more about taking this road from a four-lane to a two-lane, I think that we need to take some more time to kind of consider what planned projects are already on the books in relation to creating or making this a more walkable area. As it stands today, you know, I wouldn't recommend anybody walk along that road, um, but if there's already, you know, I think we need to take a minute to look and see what's already being planned. Um, you know, I, I thought we were, uh, potentially moving away from investing downtown in that area, but I would like to see if there's are things in the queue. I would like to see that, so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, delay this for six weeks.
Well, let's hear from all the speakers. That's generally what we do, counsel, and we can entertain it at that time, because the chairman hadn't spoken to this issue, and Counsel Alexander and Parker would like to weigh in.
At the, uh, at the behest of the chairman, I will withdraw my motion.
Thank you for accuracy. Counselor Parker?
Uh, thank you. Uh, well, I hit it. Uh, I was gonna, uh, kinda in the same light as that we moved to, uh, delay this item, so at the appropriate time, uh, we'll come back with the motion, just so we can gather additional information and work through your committee. Mr. Chairman?
All right. Uh, Counsel, Counselor Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm inclined to also go in the direction that I think that most of the council is leaning towards, because the thing that really concerns me from this morning is that the neighborhood and the people that live near that area had not been considered or given any consideration for this, and I truly believe we have to weigh in on the voice of the people that live near the area. Now, on the other hand, I'm all for development and revitalization and people creating a profit, but I, and I do think we have to look at what is the growing population we have in Birmingham. As you said, we're looking at UAB and the options there. You have the millennials, 25 to 44, and they don't have the space that we always had. I've downsized myself and have to rely on storage, but I still feel, though, we need to consider what the neighborhood has to say and those, uh, that are around it, so that, that will reflect the, the way that I go with this. And, um, so I'm inclined as well, Mr. Chair, to see if we could offer some type of delay so that you can go back to the neighborhoods and maybe you can consider the project that you're doing. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Um, let me hear from Counselor Valerie Abbott a second time.
Thank you, Counselor Hoyt. I will be more concise this time. I wanted to, uh, make two other points that I didn't make the first time because I ran out of time. Um, one is the comprehensive plan that we keep referring to. These neighborhoods that are on Red Mountain, none of them have had their pre, framework plan, plans done. So these neighborhoods have not had any opportunity to, to pitch in their opinions regarding the current zoning and what is going on in their neighborhoods, which is one reason for the, the unhappiness of the community over this, is they knew nothing about it. This is not what they wanted to see below Vulcan, and although it certainly is not as hideous as most, um, self-storage is, I mean, it does look better, but, um, you know, the neighborhood, it's like it was a big surprise to them when the bulldozers came and bulldozed all the trees and made that big gash beside the road. The best thing you did was take down billboards. Um, so the neighborhood has not had an opportunity to pitch in their opinions to the comp plan and the framework plans. And the other thing is the same point I made earlier. All the work done thus far would have to be done for any development on this property. You know, the waterworks, the sewer, the county. So this property, in its current state, I think as Ms. Chaffin pointed out, could be developed for something more appropriate now that you're aware that this is a, going to be a highly walkable and, uh, you know, visitable place. It may be something that would be considered. So I just wanted to throw that in, Counselor Hoyt. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, I've not spoken, and, um, while I think there has to be some balance in terms of what we do, uh, from an economic development standpoint, and, um, what we would employ, um, as we look at those being affected, uh, immediately that are in proximity, and so, um, but I'm gonna look at it from a different angle, um, because I want to know how you're gonna traverse onto the property, because that is a busy, busy, busy street. I know, um, and you can't help but to fly. Either you're gonna be flying up, because you had to put some gas to get up that hill, and then you kind of coast down fast, too, when you come around the hill, and I don't know if that street would provide, uh, for you being able to safely traverse, particularly if you got folk who have U-Hauls and whatever. And so talk to me about a turnaround space and, you know, things of that nature, because I think that's what we have to consider.
Certainly.
Okay.
Certainly. Let me, let me talk, first of all, there was a question that came up, um, um, around traffic. And so my statement about, um, that our customers are more frequent users historically, it's absolutely accurate, but it's also a very relevant or relative, excuse me, statement. So it is, um, people use these more, more frequently, but they're not in and out-
Speaking to the mic so that-
Sorry, they're not in and out, um, several times a day. So this is going to be a little bit difficult to see, but this is a traffic study that we've done on our properties. And so this is a, um, on the, the facility on the left is a multi, is a multi-story storage facility, um, in a, in a dense urban neighborhood, surrounded by about 7,000 apartments and the kind of, um, uh, urban commercial that I think is very much, um, certainly in vogue in many cities, Nashville, Charlotte, and here. Average vehicle traffic each day to our site is 12 to 16 vehicles. So while it is a higher use from a storage standpoint, it's still a very nominal use overall. One in 60 of those vehicles is a truck. So as I said to start out with, we serve the neighborhood. Who's coming to us? You know, I'm coming in my daily commuter car, maybe my pickup truck, but I'm coming here, you know, to pick up a box, to pick up a bike, to drop something off. That frequency of use, we have, uh, this property will have about 500 customers. If you looked at 12 to 16 times a full week, we get everybody coming about once a month. So 500 trips over the course of a month. Um, yes, it will add traffic to this corridor, but not in a significant way that anyone will notice, and we make our argument that actually that's keeping people from causing traffic problems commuting elsewhere. If I have to drive seven miles-
And my question was, how do they traverse onto the property, not how frequently-
Certainly, certainly. So we, uh, in our driveway-
The issue is, if you got a U-Haul, I need to know, uh, is there gonna be space allowed for them to do a turnaround and, and to be able to come out, because I'm, you know-
Yes, sir.
I've been to the doctor over there at one point, and it was hard to get in, and it's hard to get out. I'm just, you know, I used to be a doctor's officer, uh, what you call it, a gastroenterologist or something. I'm not saying that correctly. Somebody will correct me somewhere. But yes.
So let me address that. So it certainly is an issue, and we recognize the busyness of the road as well as access to the property. So one, we have our driveway permits, um, as approved already. In order to specifically address the issue that you're raising, if you can see from our facade, the first part of that building is actually elevated.
Okay.
So the front line of our building, you're able to not only drive up to it, but drive under it, turn all the way around, and come up. So we allow full circulation on that first level, much like you would a port, um, a, a parking garage, a port of cacher at a hotel, a check-in. So where you see the red vehicle, that's actually underneath-
That's a drive-through?
Yes, it's not a drive-through, it's a drive-under that allows for full circulation. So we will have multiple loading points, two to three places, so we're not clogging up one part of the property. We do not offer rental trucks, so while U-Haul may come into the property, we won't have a truck fleet at this property operating. So most of the time, who will be in that parking lot was, was one or two folks from our office staff, and then two to three people that may be visiting the property. So it's a very good question and something that we've taken into account pretty significantly.
Let me hear from the Office of City Attorney, please.
Thank you, Counselor Hoyt. Note, I want the city council to note that this project did not have to go before the neighborhood. Just wanted to put that on the record. And also, some of you noted that you all wanted a continuance. It's my recommendation that you leave the hearing open. If you choose to do that, leave it open and then just come back at another date and do not decide, if you all choose to do that.
Can you put that in layman's terms?
If you all want to look at some more information, then you all can just continue this hearing to a later date and not decide.
Not delay it, but to continue it to another day in a, a day certain?
Correct. That's correct.
Six, okay.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay. All right. Um, Counselwoman Alexander, and then, uh, Counsel Woods and Parker.
I'm taking that one.
Oh, you're taking that one? Okay. All right. Counselor Woods?
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, like I said, I do want to be able to take some time to look at some of the issues. I do think that we need to be careful in, uh, once someone has started a project, to stopping and telling them that they should build something different. Uh, this man, he has a storage company, and so to tell him he should build an office building, I think is a slippery slope, but I do think that, uh, we do need to take some time and look at this other information as far as what is actually planned, um, and it sounds like there's some significant plans that I haven't been aware of, so I would like to see, you know, what those are, what those cost estimates are, and, uh, where those anticipated funds are coming from, but, um, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to four, six weeks, or what date it is.
Yeah, and before-
October 8th.
Yeah. I'll second that motion.
Well, okay. And I would like to think that we were turning it back over to the president first, and then you can make the motion. Isn't that how that works?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, um, but, uh, I do think that, um, we should not be in the habit of telling folk what they ought to do. I, I do, I, I mean, that's fair. Um, but, you know, make your decisions based on, as I have done and some others have brought it to our attention, is how you, uh, the traffic, you know, we need to do our own traffic count. Okay? We need to do that. Uh, that's third-party information, um, unless they got it from us, I don't know. We have a traffic department, uh, Mr. Chief, and so, uh, that might be something that we consider in our continuum, um, that we look at that. Um, and then, uh, we might also want, uh, planning permits to look at, uh, and give us some understanding of runoff and things of that nature, so we have an understanding of what that looks like, and because what we've heard this morning is really third-hand information, and we need to hear it from our staff. Um, and if they prepare to answer that now, that's fine. Uh, you know, Mr. Uh, Mr. Rebell, you know, he's, you know, he's astute, and, uh, I don't think they get any better than he, uh, when it comes to this. Now, if, if that be, be so, um, maybe we need to hear from him. If the chief allows, I'm sorry. I don't want to get in no trouble. I don't want to go to jail. I mean, that's the purpose, and the engineering department.
Counsel, if you would, please allow staff a chance to provide the proper, um, follow-up. Please allow them time to research, and then we'll make sure we report back to the council.
Okay. So it's clear that when we come back, uh, as we continue this to a time certain, then, um, staff would have already done the due diligence? Are we understanding that, Mr. Chief?
Yes, sir, Counselor.
Okay, very good. Uh, Madam Chair, I'm turning this back over to you, uh, for a vote.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Woods, would you like to, would you like to restate your motion, just so we have it on the record?
Uh, yes, and, uh, like, also, just kind of would be hoping that we can kind of get that information as it's, uh, prepared in between now and then. Um, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion-
Excuse me. Yes, sir, you had something? You had your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, come on, so we can get this all in.
First, I'd like to point out that the Neighborhood Association-
First, I'd like to point out that the Neighborhood Association, Redmont Neighborhood, actually voted on this issue overwhelmingly against this construction back, maybe a year or two ago when it was proposed. The whole neighborhood is still entirely against this construction. Uh, and my question to them is, basically, do I understand that, uh, the, the building is gonna act as a retaining wall? I mean, because right now, basically, they, they are digging, destroying...
Sir, address the...
Yeah, well, and, and let me suggest, sir, that, um, 'cause we, he's already, he's gone over that. I've heard him, what he said about the, how they dug into the, to the, uh, the, uh, the soil and what have you.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, but we're gonna continue this, and so, I want you to hold that. Because right now, it, we're not gonna do anything.
Okay.
Okay? And we'll get those, you know, we'll have some answers, because our engineers need to answer that, too.
Okay.
All right, very good.
Now, back to Councilor Woods.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this time, I'd like to make a motion to continue this, uh, for six weeks, um, I believe, October 8th.
Second.
That was Councilor Woods and President Pro Tim Parker, so we are ready to vote. That item passes, so we are, we, we will delay for six weeks.
What, what date is that?
October 8th.
Okay.
Which is the day of the election.
Y'all gonna be here? You better be here. I can tell you that, no.
Mr. Clerk, we are ready for our first, our next item.
It should be item, um, 11, um, also, all are permanent operation items dealing with the land, a quick claim deed. You want me to read all three of them, so we can get the UC out of the way for all of them?
Yes, that would be good.
Okay. Item 11, an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of $4,863.06 to execute a quick claim deed to Avondale Turn LLC for sale of property legally described as a lot, 17th Block 15, Avondale, is recorded in MacBook 1, page 221, 221, in the appropriate office of Jefferson County, Alabama, and physically located at 3914 Fifth Avenue South, Birmingham, which was required by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens, and according to Section 3-1-4C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. Item 12, an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of $4,616.06 to execute a quick claim deed to Georgia Harris Daniels for sale of property legally described as a north 150 feet, .9 feet of lot. 20 Anderson's ad is recorded by MacBook 17, page 8, in the appropriate office of Jefferson County, Alabama, and physically located at 1817 Princeton Avenue Southwest, Birmingham, which was required by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens, and according to Section 3-1-4C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. And item 13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of $2,035.22 to execute a quick claim deed to Rodrick W. Prestier for the sale of property legally described as lot 19, Block 3, Oakmont Survey, 1551, is recorded in MacBook 15, page 51, in the appropriate office of Jefferson County, Alabama, and physically located at 4833 Seventh Avenue, Birmingham, which was required by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens, and according to Section 3-1-4C of the general code of the city of Birmingham. And again, we need UC to entertain all those items today. So, I need a motion for UC.
So, Mayor?
Second.
Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Councilmember Hery? Out. Councilmember Hoyt? This is for UC, for these items.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn?
Yes.
Council President Pro Tim Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams is out. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
President Abbott?
Yes.
All right, now the motion on the items.
Move the item.
Second.
It's Dr. O'Quinn and Councilor Smithman.
All right, they're all before you, unless you wanna do them individually.
I think that doing them all together is a good thing. Is there, there are no speakers up, so we're ready to vote.
Okay. All right, voting should be open for all three items. That vote should be up.
That motion passes. Next item?
I think we're going to item 21, which is on page 8. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute his Second Amendment to professional services agreement with Jefferson County for Committee for Economic Opportunity under Resolution Number 732-18, as amended by Resolution Number 1377-18, under which JCCO should provide additional services assisting the city with organizing, management, and supervising the youth employment program by hiring not more than 50 additional youth for the job program and executive internship program, and the city will pay JCCO an additional amount, not to receive $2,500 per intern, for a nine-week term for an amount not to receive $43,500 for a total compensation to JCCO in an amount not to receive $275,000 each year of the agreement, subject to annual appropriation in the city's corresponding fiscal year's budget, for a term of three years, ending June 30th, 2020. Motion, please.
Move the item. Second.
That was Dr. O'Quinn and President Pro Tim Parker. Councilor Hoyt?
Um, yes. My question is, why would we pay JCCO $43,000 to manage $275,000?
That's not...
Uh, that's, so what I... So, I guess what I need to know, how much are they managing of the city's money for this particular program? What is the dollar amount? Because obviously, for them to work, even if it's from, uh, from the council, for them to work, there's a dollar amount that's attached to that. And so, what is the dollar amount? Is it a million dollars? Is it $2 million? I don't know what the deal... And I guess, I'm still needing to know, what is the amount that we've given JCCO to be stewards of? What is that amount?
Beg your pardon?
What is the amount that we've given JCCO? I mean, there has to be an amount, uh, for them to, to manage in order to receive $2,500 per intern.
Yeah, and I don't know that anyone in the mayor's office would have that answer right now, because this was simply an item to be able to add interns if council members wanted them in the fall, winter, and spring, rather than just summer.
They have some idea of a budget with respect to that. I, you know, um, you're the chair of budget finance now.
In the item, it's $2,500 per intern that we would pay them if we want, if you want an intern, it would be 25. If any council member wanted an intern, it would be $2,500.
Is this $2,500 that the intern can make, or is this $2,500 that you, that you give them to monitor this program?
This is the intern will make that money.
Okay, well, I'm, it needs to be clear. It's not clear. And if it was clear, I wouldn't even ask, ask the question. So, what I want the public to know, that there's an opportunity for our young people to earn up to $2,500 based on a program that we have with JCCO, who would be a fiscal agent, I guess, of, of sort. Okay? So, they need to know that. We need to be advertising that, uh, so. And what is the limit to, to each office?
It's however much discretionary money you wanna put towards it.
Okay.
And, and Dr. O'Quinn is going to speak next, and he is the one who's making the initial request, but this was to cover not only his request, but any other counselors that wanted to do it. So, Dr. O'Quinn, if you can explain.
So, um, just first, to, to, I think I understand your question, Councilor Hoyt. You, you want to know, uh, what portion of the allocated funding is going towards JCCO to cover their, their services that they're providing? Uh, so, I, I think that's a valid question, um, and hopefully, the administration can help us answer that. Um, the, my motivation for asking our central staff to, to look at this was, uh, because under the current, um, Kids and Jobs Program that we have in place, that was really just a, a summer opportunity. Um, but we have, uh, students that, you know, are available to, to do internships other parts of the, the year. So, um, the intent of this amendment was just to ex, expand the scope of the project to allow JCCO to serve as a fiscal agent for this and bring, um, students in in other parts of the year. Um, so, that's the, the primary intent. But I think that you do have a valid question in understanding, uh, us, understanding what percent, what portion of the total allocated funds, uh, JCCO, um, is receiving to provide those services.
Yeah, well, and, and thank you, because even the, the jobs, uh, program for Fox 6, which is an exit program, uh, and, um, had, had been run, uh, by a great leader, and, um, Chief Sparks, um, but even that has a budget. And so, what I'm trying to find out, what is the budget? You know, it's, it's, it's almost like when we had, um, O&amp;B, not O&amp;B, but REV being the fiscal agent, and I don't wanna go back over there, 'cause that's, that's water under grade.
That's always...
But I just wanna understand what the budget is for this, for them to, to run this program, and, and we have to have some understanding of that. That's all. So, I appreciate your explanation, but, so, can somebody from the administration give me a number?
Madam President, this is your item. I can't speak to item that's com, that originated from U-Haul.
Okay, but I think the question is, you know, the city has retained JCCO for these, these youth jobs, and, and I understand Councilor Hoyt's question is what percentage or what...
If you're referring to the Summers Jobs Program, there is no fee. But this item is your item for outside of Summers.
So, there's no fee for them handling the kids?
It's never been.
Okay, well, that's the answer, then. There is no fee.
Okay, well, I need to know, I don't know that.
Well, we didn't either.
Ain't asked questions around here?
No, it's good. It's good, and now we know the answer, they're not charging us.
'Cause my folk gonna call me, 'cause they wanna be informed, too. So, I need to know what to tell them.
And this is open to any council member. That was the reason that, um, Mr. McDaniel suggested doing it this way, was to prevent us having to come back and amend the contract every time a council wanted to hire an intern. So...
All right.
Yeah, it was a good way to keep from, I mean, keep workload reasonable. So, that's what it is. Any council member can do it. So...
But, but there's also, um, abate the issue of the 772. Or we, we, we do it one time? We don't have to have a 772 to do this?
Yeah, it's a three-year contract that's here, and it doesn't...
Okay.
This one doesn't have to be a 772.
So, so you don't have to advertise this, anything, in the paper? Amendment to this existing contract, which you've already advertised. Okay, so we, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out, if we're gonna cut through the bureaucracy.
Yeah, we're trying to eliminate red tape.
Okay.
And still be legal.
Okay, okay.
So, we are ready to vote, Mr. Clerk. Uh, that item passes. Next item?
Uh, let's see, 21, let's see, 32. Which is on page 11. A resolution accepting the city of Birmingham's Rebuild Alabama Act transportation plan.
Yes, and I just wanted the appropriate...
Motion.
Oh, a motion, I'm sorry.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay. And, and my question was simply for someone to come up and talk about this, so the public will even know what the city of Birmingham's Rebuild Alabama Act transportation plan is.
Madam President?
Yes.
The monies, the monies from this, uh, the additional cents on the gas tax. State reached out to cities, um, across the state, and asked for a plan of what, what was gonna be the use of that money. And the city's use of that money will be the paved streets.
Okay, so, I have been asked by citizens if this is additional money. I'm pretty sure it's already been accounted for in our budget, unfortunately, but they wanted to know specifically if this was more money for street paving, so that their streets that are unpaved right now would get paved. So, is this over and above what we've got in our budget for this coming year, the year we're in now, or is this money that we've already accounted for?
We won't start to see these, um, new monies until October. Um, and this, these monies will come in starting in October.
Okay, but have we already accounted for these funds in our budget? Are we already counting on them? So, it's not new money?
No.
More money for paving, it's...
Each year, um, the, the increments will increase, will max out somewhere probably about 1.4 million, probably three year, two, three years from now.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That, that answers my question. Dr. O'Quinn?
Thank you, uh, Council President Abbott. So, uh, as I understand it from attending the MPO meetings, um, this was actually a requirement put into the, uh, new fuel tax legislation, that local municipalities have to pass a transportation plan, um, in order to qualify, to apply for the ATRIP 2, uh, program. So, ATRIP 2 is a, a fund that was established by the fuel, new fuel tax legislation that is going to fund, um, local projects of, of interest to municipalities. So, um, this is, this item is really just fulfilling that requirement to put us in a position to qualify for that funding.
Thank you. Councilor Hoyt?
Yeah, well, that, that, that explains it, um, 'cause I was just trying to see if there was a plan, if in fact, we had, um, provided any input. But then, when I go to the, um, the attachment, and I see that it's already been delineated, then I'm, I'm good with that.
Good, thank you. Mr. Clerk, we're ready to vote. That, that item passes. Next item?
Item 33. A resolution supporting the efforts of the Jefferson County Commission to request the Birmingham Water Works Board commit to match funds earmarked by the Commission to Assist Needing Ratepayers with their Water Bill, sets action with promoting healthy environment while supporting the socioeconomic and physical health of Birmingham and surrounding communities. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
President Pro Tim Parker and Councilor Alexander? Are there any speakers? Mr. Hoyt? Mr. Hoyt, did you have a question regarding this item before we vote?
Yes, well, and, and I think there needs to be, um, some public... Yes, well, and I think there needs to be some public dialogue, because I'm clear about what the county is doing, because they've talked about it in committee, and it's just something that we are supporting, and they're proposing to set up some matching funds to help to assist the ratepayers, those in need. Then that need to be said. That needs to be something that the public knows that we are supporting that, and that we want to see this come to fruition. So, can you talk about that, Counsel Alexander?
Counsel Alexander?
Because she can speak.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Hoyt, for actually pulling this, so that we can give this the proper attention, and our citizens know that we do support any improvement in the quality of life for any of our residents, as particularly as it relates to these sewer bills and payments that some families have to struggle to make. So, out of the Utilities Committee in our meeting last week, we wanted to show a joint effort in support of what the County Commission is already doing. Now, they had had the opportunity to already have budgeted this payment for this type of support, but we wanted to entertain at this time just our overall support for the County Commission and their aid to our residents.
So, Madam, Alexandra, I mean, President, I mean, Counsel Alexandra, so, is this ceremonial, or would we in fact sit down and have a discussion, as these others have, about, you know, doing something on this, on that scale? Because I would imagine that a goodly portion of those residents, citizens of Birmingham, majority, I would think. And so, this would be something that we need to consider as well in terms of budget, okay? And I know we got mid-year coming up and all that, what have you, but we need to be having those discussions now, so that we can try to see how we might reprogram some things, you know, at the recommendation of the mayor.
Thank you.
I want to be correct when I say that.
Thank you. Counsel Hilliard?
Yes, absolutely. I concur with my colleagues. I really do feel like that we should really maybe do something on a level of having some mass meetings, or, you know, co-op, you know, some collaboration with our constituents to actually know how they feel. We, I know from my standpoint, I want to take every opportunity to help my constituents, you know, as much as I can. But also, I think we need to have dialogue, so they would know how interested we are in helping them. So, to that prevail, I yield to my colleagues that we start looking to have these meetings.
Thank you. Dr. O'Quinn?
Yes, my question is specifically related to the request to the Water Works Board. Is this something that's actively being deliberated or being presented as a proposal to the Water Works Board?
I could speak. My understanding from the information that we received, there were three commissioners that went over as a result of the budget that they passed, or the budget that they had proposed, that there were monies set aside again to, for this relief. And they went over to the Water Works Board to talk with them about their funds that they would have. But they have already given these funds or put in monies for those funds.
All right, so the commissioners are asking the Water Works Board to help participate in this? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. President Pro Tim Parker?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam President, and I agree with everything that's been said, Counsel Hoyt, and also Counsel Hilliard, and Chair Lady Alexander, about the need for us to, number one, make sure we engage within the community. So, I think at the appropriate time, since I sit on the committee with the chair lady, if we could pass this, and then ask that the committee then set up some community engagement meetings, where we bring representatives from, just like we have that committee meeting scheduled in September, perhaps it might be a special call, but we have it in the evening time, and just move it around. If you could come with several dates, and we could just, if you could come back next week with several locations where we could have those conversations, and invite the necessary stakeholders, whether that's county and all the stakeholders together, to have that conversation of if...
Whether you could iron the districts for that.
Yeah, just whatever, but if we could call a committee meeting this week, just to bring back, or have it next week to lay out with those dates and locations over the next couple of weeks, to have a greater conversation, if that's, and it might be that, Madam President, that those dates will come back after tomorrow, I know you, and we could just announce them next week, if that's, if we need to declare some kind of public purpose. Okay?
We'll be glad to manage that through the Utilities Committee, and then go ahead and set those dates, and discuss those with each of the council members, and then bring those back to the body. So, thank you. And I appreciate the support for everyone to ensure that we go through this and have things decent and in order. Thank you.
Well, you know, I'm just trying to make you a rock star.
Counsel Hoyt?
I said, I'm just trying to make you a rock star, okay? Since you bought it four. Yeah, you need to maximize.
Well, Counsel Alexander, I would like to say that I think it is a fantastic idea to bring the County Commission, the Water Works Board, and the City Council of Birmingham together in meetings, because this is such an important issue. We have people in every district that can't afford to pay those water and sewer bills because they are so incredibly high. They are only going up. And the people who are responsible, they're all out of prison now, are no longer with us, and we're going to be paying for the next 40 years. I will be dead by the time we finish paying for all of the malfeasance that went on at the county with that sewer system. I will be underground. I know it, I know it for a fact. Now, Counsel Hoyt's a lot younger than I am, so he may stick around, but in 40 years, I know I'll be gone. And that is a horrifying thing to think about, that the people responsible for this, the people responsible for this mess, they, you know, they're done now with what, with their little bit of punishment, and we are going to be paying for the rest of our lives, some of us. And that's a tough thing to think about, and it is going up. It will continue to go up and up and up, and we can't stop it. So, we do need help, and the fact that this council is certainly concerned about our residents, and Mr. Revel, I think that if you're, if you got your water cut off, we don't allow people to live in houses without water, do we? I mean, wouldn't that mean that your house would be, you would not be able to continue to live there without water service? Yeah, so it's a serious issue for people. And when your water gets cut off, then you have to pay a bunch of money to get it cut back on, and it's money you didn't have to pay the bill in the first place. So, thank you for moving this ahead. And thanks to the County Commission. This is great. I think we sent some members over there who pushed this.
They did, thank you.
So, we are ready to vote. That item passes. Next item?
Item number 34, a resolution confirming the appointment of six regular members to the Birmingham Museum of Art. One member to fill the unexpired term of John Hudson, the design, said term expiring October 31st, 2020, and one term expiring October 31st, August, I'm sorry, August 31st, 2020, and one term expiring August 31st, 2022, and four terms expiring August 31st, 2024. And I think it's Counsel Parker's.
President Pro Tim Parker?
For which one? Item 34, they're in the back of your booklet.
And they were handed out a new this morning, I believe, revised.
No, 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 I think that was with the Civil Rights Institute.
That's just the Civil Rights Institute.
But the, it was, Mr. Graham, you want to come?
Page 450 on your iPad.
Hold on one second. Let me...
It'll be in the back, Counsel, on the 34 without the eight.
Reason I want to see, because I want to know what commitments we're making to diversity.
Those are somewhere right there, starting with the, right here.
Is this the list here?
Yes, sir.
And do we have who they're replacing?
They're on there, they're on there.
And let me also say, and Graham, you might want to say, there are several, there are probably, probably, probably seven or more that will be coming. Their terms expire in September, and those will be, so I think there is a full list that was submitted to the clerk's office, but because of the dates of when they expire, because they're staggered.
That's correct.
I think, Counsel Hoyt, I think it would be, I think it's, it will be reflective of the city, when the entire list, so Graham, do you have that other?
Yes, I do. May I walk through it?
Yeah, well, before you do that, I just wanted to say that we spent a enormous amount of time, when the previous director was there, to really promote, and Mr. Parker, this was when Counsel Parker was the chair of Park and Rec, and I was invited to one of the trustee meetings. And I told him that, you know, that the trustee meeting, I mean, the board didn't look like the city. And I didn't think that, you know, living in Mountain Brook got a lot of money, was a prerequisite, even though you need some folk on there, but there was some African-American folk who also loved the arts and had an appreciation. And where they may not have the money, they have the understanding how important that is, and so, it's important for our young people to be exposed, and of course, Gail Andrews, and that's where my mind was sitting there, but, and of course, Tom Hammett, your former boss, Madam Chair, agreed with me that it was too white, and that we did need to have some diversity with respect to the board, and as a result, we were able to get John Hudson and Judge Cook appointed at that time, and what have you. And so, I'd like to see the continuum of that, and so that we have some balance in terms of that, and you've got some good folk on here.
Counsel, let me go, because I think the list was split up because of the conversation around the terms, those that expired in August, and then we'll come back next week with another slate. But some of the annual members that are being recommended that you will see next week is Carol Clark, you also have John Montgomery, Kimberly Richardson, Andrew Robinson, Sonya Smith, from your District Eight School Board, and Nick Willis, I think. So, there are going to be some other members that'll be coming. They would have all been presented today, but because of the staggered terms, Mr. Clark advised us that we would need to go with what was available today, coming, and next week, you'll see the other members. So, I think it speaks to the fact of diversity that's reflective.
And I also need you to speak to whether or not, and maybe he can answer this, because, you know, they need, most people don't know about the museum, there's an advisory board, they're not voting members.
Well, the other thing...
Trustee, let me finish, Mr. Chair.
Okay, okay, I was trying to get there.
There's a trustee board who makes the decision on what they buy and what they do. I mean, they make all the decisions. And so, we want to make sure that the trustee board, those who make decisions, look like the city, okay? And so, and if it doesn't, then you're not going to get my support. But if it does, it's going to get my support, and I think that our director knows very well, he is probably one of the best we ever had.
Thank you.
Okay, so, now you can...
Well, I was going, Counsel Hoyt, I wanted to...
Thank you, Counsel, and President Pro Tim Parker.
I just wanted to go one more thing, Dr. Hoyt, and we've gone a step further, and that's not only with the Museum of Art, but also with the Civil Rights Institute, is that we will be planning a meeting where the board will have interaction with the council, so that all, just like all the stakeholders need to come together and have ongoing conversations, like you mentioned before, with, that's been done in the past, so that we understand their vision, and it's in line with the city's vision. And so, we'll be working through our committee that we both sit on.
And no disrespect, but we also need some folk from the community. And, you know, when you mentioned some of those names, these are folk who work for corporate America, we also need some folk entrenched in the neighborhood, because, you know, and when I tell you, I spent a lot of time, we had no art from the museum in the black community. It only when I approached Ms. Andrews and told her that, you know, exposure is everything, the earlier the better. And so, it was a result of Ms. Hendricks and Elias, who has a great collection, that we brought it out to the Five Points West Library, because I see the Museum of Art on loan at UAB and all these other places. Well, you know, if climate control was an issue, those places are climate controlled. And so, and I'm just telling you how we got there, and, but we got to be intentional. As we sit on board, as we recommend, they need to understand that we want it to be, to represent this city. That's the only way we abate these challenges that we have, and that we really address diversity in a way that it needs to be, okay?
Thank you, Counsel Hoyt. So, you want to tell us the...
Yes, ma'am. I'd like the director to go through the list, and give a little update, and just respond to some of...
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning, everyone. My name is Graham Betrow, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Director of the Birmingham Museum of Art. I've been in that position for two years now, coming up on my two-year anniversary, but I've been with the museum since 2006, first as a postdoctoral fellow, later as a curator, chief curator, deputy director, and now director. So, I've risen through the ranks, and I'm proud to say that I am a citizen of the city of Birmingham. I live on Highland Avenue. Counsel Hoyt, I remember well the conversation we had when I took the reins from my predecessor, Gail Andrews, who demonstrated her commitment to diversity. I believe I had a strong foundation on which to build, and I remember when you came over to my office...
That's right.
...to speak to me and to check in, to say, where does this new guy fall with respect to diversity?
That's right, ma'am.
I've taken it very, very seriously.
Thank you.
And I'm proud to say, and I'll say this on the record, this is the single most diverse board slate ever to come before this body in the history of the city and the history of the museum. The museum was founded in 1951. We're coming up on our 70th anniversary. This is the most diverse board slate. I have focused my attention on the voting board, where the real power is, as you said, the people who get to make decisions about this institution. It is diverse with respect to race, it is diverse with respect to gender, and it is diverse with respect to the talents that each and every board member brings to this body. And so, I'm very, very excited about the board slate before you. Because of the way that the terms fall, the annual members, and for the first time ever, this, the museum and its governance committee has decided to activate all six annual memberships as a means, and this is how I see it, as a means of onboarding new talent. Just because someone's serving an annual membership doesn't mean we don't want them to serve a six-year regular membership in the future. Quite the contrary, there are a couple people on this list that I've been after for the last year and a half to serve a regular term. They're busy, they've got, they're asked to serve on a lot of boards, but they have agreed to appear on this slate. So, before you, today are the six regular members. We have Randall Minor, who replaces Larry Thornton. Larry Thornton has served two consecutive six-year terms. He's been kind enough to stay on until his successor was voted in, but I think he is ready after 12 years now. twelve years now, thirteen years of service, to retire, though he will still remain a strong supporter of the museum as an artist himself. Norm Davis, Norm is, been a supporter of the museum for years, he serves on our committee on collections, which has oversight over what art comes into the museum, he and his wife, Carnetta, have chaired the museum ball, and remain active as donors and participants in nearly all that we do, we have four members who are up for a second term, May Head Frye, who owns and operates Ram Tool in Avondale, which is a significant business in our community, but also one of the top women-owned and operated businesses in the entire country, she serves as our Chair of Governance presently, Mark Drew, who's Executive Vice President and General Counsel with Protective Life Corporation, which has been a major supporter of the museum for years, many of our top exhibitions have been supported by Protective Life, Joel Piasik, who's retired recently as Vice President and General Counsel from Harvard Management Corporation, Joel serves as our Vice President of Finance on the board, and is one of the reasons that for three years running, we have had a balanced budget and are fully in the black, not by much some years, we, we raise all of our budget, that which is not appropriated by this, this committee, but he's, he has added a lot of financial acumen to the operations of the museum, and finally, James Outland, James Outland currently serves as our Board Chair, and I think some of you may recognize his name as being the managing partner of the Birmingham Legion, the professional soccer team that plays here in Birmingham, which has been a great addition to our community, next week, on the agenda for this meeting, we have six annual members who will be presented, there is Carol Clark, who is a name that I think is known to many of you, she worked, used to work in the halls of city government, she is the Project Director and Community Development Specialist at Corporate Realty, I also work closely with Carol on the Jefferson County Memorial Project, John Montgomery, who is the founder and CEO of Big Communications, a leading communications firm in this city, who's done a great deal of pro bono work, both for this city and other, other government agencies, Kim Richardson, who is the President of Kimberly Richardson Consulting, Kim is an expert in grants, I can't think of a better asset to have on a museum board that is so
smart.
Yeah, there's Andy Robison, who's a partner with Bradley A-Rant Firm, who's been relied upon countless times on the past for his legal advice, we of course have a fantastic legal department here in the city of Birmingham, I'm looking at you, Madam City Attorney, but as you may know, half of our operations are non-governmental, and it's sometimes difficult for the city to weigh in on issues which are really not a city matter, so having that additional support is a great boon to the institution, Sonya Smith, who is the District Eight Representative of the Birmingham Board of Education, we are everywhere in this city, and I hope all of you had a chance to see the current issue of the Birmingham Times, we got the cover story, Birmingham Museum of Art, Portrait of Excellence, that's not just because of the excellence that we strive for every day within our four walls across the street, but it's also because of the excellence that we strive for in bringing arts education to our community, and finally, Nick Willis, who is the Greater Alabama Regional President of PNC Bank, which has been one of our cornerstone supporters in bringing art to the public of Birmingham, and to also ensuring that we are able to maintain free and open admission to every citizen of this great city, are there any further questions?
Excellent report, excellent report, appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, are you ready, or are you, are we good to move it?
Actually, I'm getting a reboot signal on my computer, so Ms. Dees, if you can kind of handle that, from, the motion, move the items there for.
Second.
The names. I think she's going to open the voting section.
Do you need this, it's printed right?
That item passes, next item?
Okay, we're at item thirty-five.
This is the one.
A resolution confirming the appointment of, is it still eighteen, eighteen members to the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, one term expiring September the first, 2020, and we're going to strike the three terms expiring September the first, 2021, and seventeen terms expiring September the first, 2022. And that's again, it's Council Parker.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Council, Council Parker, and we do have, each of us has a revised item number thirty-five in our pile of paper up here, so, President Pro Tim Parker?
Thank you, Madam President, Staley, if you want to come on up, while you're coming up, here again, we have a slate of individuals that the Civil Rights Institute has submitted for the council to, to consider, again, just as, as with Graham, the Civil Rights Institute Board, we'll, we'll be setting up community engagement conversations, I think, again, with the council, with the other city stakeholders, just so that we can all share in the vision of how we're going to move not only that civil rights district forward, but move Birmingham forward, so, with that, Ms. Taylor, you want to kind of give us a brief overview?
Yes, good morning, I think we're still in morning, good morning to the council, to the President, to the Mayor, councilors, Councilor Parker, thank you so much for this opportunity, my name is Andrea Taylor, and I am the CEO and the President of the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, not unfamiliar face, I think, to this body, I am completing my fourth year in Birmingham, Alabama, in this role, and I'm privileged and pleased to be a part of this important community and national organization, we're delighted to be here to bring forward the names of a slate of board members that have been chosen in a period of some disruption, and a brouhaha that found us in a very awkward position as an organization, and in search of new leadership to help us pursue and carry forward with our mission to promote and preserve human and civil rights for, for all people, and so we came up with a process that I think most councilors are familiar with, we've been communicating with you about what we decided to do to replace the board, and to bring the leadership to the fore that could help us carry forward in our goals and mission, and so we have been working actually for the last four or five months, we had an open nomination process for the first time, whereby anyone could either self-nominate or be nominated, and we invited those nominations to come from across the county, and indeed, in a, in a way, across the country, and so we're very pleased that we have eighteen couns-, eighteen board members to recommend at this particular time, having reviewed them with the Parks and Rec Committee earlier, and so, I don't know if you want me to go through each name, I'm happy to answer questions about.
Okay, if you could, yeah, if you could go through every name, and real quick, before you start with the names, also, there is a, a secondary document that'll be coming, I guess, in September regarding the management agreement, the three-year management agreement, and so, you might want to briefly touch on that.
Yes.
When you go through the names, but that's going to be a conversation that, it will, we'll all have to engage in that, as we, as we look forward to what the goals and what they're over the next three years.
So the management agreement, for those who may not know, and others in the audience, the management agreement is the document that governs the relationship between the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute and the city of Birmingham, which is a funder, a significant funder of the institution, and we are in the FY twenty budget for a one million dollar allocation, which is consistent with the allocation for the last three cycles, as I recall, of the budget for our operations, for the building that is owned and maintained by the city of Birmingham, and so the three-year agreement expired in June, on June thirty, we have an extension from the city for, to carry us forward until the end of August, so we will be sending over perhaps this afternoon, our draft of a portion of the agreement that we were asked to, to review and to develop, and the city law department is working on the remainder of that document, so hopefully sooner rather than later, we can meet the deadline of having a new management agreement that will govern our relationship between the city and the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, if not the end of this week, by early in, next week, in the new, in the new quarter, in the second quarter of the year. Any other questions or comments about the management agreement, if not, let me go through the appointments that we have in our, in the board, and what we were trying to do, as I said, we had a very extensive process, we were very pleased to receive a, an overwhelming response to our call for applications and nominations, we received more than fifty nominations, and these were all from very serious people who were particularly interested in working with the Civil Rights Institute, and many of whom could have served, we narrowed that group from over fifty applications to a group of about twenty, and we had three days of interviews with those twenty individuals to determine their qualifications, their interests, their skills, and their willingness to serve, and from that number, we selected twelve new board members, new prospective board members for B C R I, and we had an existing board at the beginning of the year, just to give you some context, we had thirteen members of the board, we had three of those members resigned at the time of the Fred Shelsworth Award incident, and then subsequently, two additional board members resigned, and so we, that left us with eight board members, and all eight board members were eligible for a second term, if they so desired, two of those board members stepped away, and ended their, their terms will end on August thirty-first, and that left us with six returning board members, six board members who are currently serving and want to continue for a second term, and then we added twelve, we thought that our bylaws allow for up to twenty-seven board members, we've never really had that number, we have determined in the short term that twenty-one board members is probably an ideal number and a target, but we felt that having six returning board members and twice as many new board members would be a lot of people to onboard at one time, and we plan extensive orientation for the board members, and so we come before you today with the reappointments of six individuals whose names I will call, Isaac Cooper, who is an entrepreneur and the head and founder of I C M Consulting, Roslyn Houston, who is a senior executive with B B B A USA, Danny Markstein, who is a principal in Markstein, a marketing and public relations firm, John Oros, who is head of the Birmingham Convention and Visitors Bureau, John Porter, who is an executive at Alabama Power, and Reverend Thomas Wilder, who is a, the pastor at Bethel Baptist Church, those are the six names that are brought before you today for reappointment to terms that, again, there was a tension in looking at the expiration dates too staggering, so that everybody who has been on the board would not be rotating off simultaneously, so Mr. Cooper would expire, he would have a one-year term, and then be eligible for renewal at the end of that term, Roslyn Houston would serve a three-year term, as would the others, Houston, Markstein, Oros, Porter, and Wilder, the new appointments include the twelve individuals, three of whom are replacing individuals who resigned in January of, of this January, or February of this year, and the, the rest are filling, or vacant positions, and those individuals are Cassandra Ann Adams, who is at Sanford University, in the law school, Cumberland Law School, William Burgess, who is head of an organization called Burgess Fine Arts, and works in the arts area, and in consulting and travel, he is a native of Birmingham, but he resides in New York, and he is willing, able, and eager to engage and help us with some of our national outreach in terms of fundraising, Tamara Coin Beasley, M.D., is a relatively newcomer to the Birmingham community, she's in the Pediatrics Department at U A B, and is interested in helping us think about some of the health issues that face our communities, and how we might get involved in advocacy for that issue, Naisha Black is with the Regional Planning Commission, and is a demographer, who is an academic, and coming to our board, Robert Dickerson is known to many of you as a businessman in the community, and is also very involved with the A.G. Gaston Conference, Darryl Grant is a member of the team at K P M G, coming to the, to the board with skills in finance and, and financial management, Angela McKenzie is in the Marketing Department at Regions Bank, which has been a longtime supporter of the institute's programs, Richard Rice, an attorney who is self-employed with the Rice Firm LLC, another attorney, John Saxon, who is also in his own firm, John Saxon P.C., and David Thomas, who is a district manager with Starbucks, Starbucks has been a partner with us on a number of projects, you'll recall, I think it was a year ago, we were in your district, Councilor Hoyer, for the opening of the new Training Center in Starbucks, and we do a number of programs with them that they support, and then finally, Reverend Wendellin Webb, who I think is in the room, she was here, Reverend Webb, you are, I think is well-known to all of you, who is a pastor in the local church, and also head of the Foot Soldiers International, we were attentive, as you were talking about diversity in the previous presentation, we were attentive to the demographics of the city of Birmingham, and took that into consideration as we recruited new board members, and so we have, our, our statistics, we have seven females, eleven males, we have, all the females are African-American, and we have four white males, so that's the diversity spread among the eighteen individuals, they are really eager to serve, we're eager to have them join us, we have a lot of work to do, we can see that in the world in which we are functioning at this juncture, regardless of your politics, we're in a very challenging time, when dialogue, conversation, knowledge of history, and understanding and tolerance are more important than they've ever been, and we're anxious to engage these new board members and begin to do our, our work together, so we have an orientation plan for them, we hope that there will be many opportunities to invite the community to come to the institute and meet and interact with these board members, and I just would close with a plug for some of the things that we have going on there, I think you know about the A.G. Gaston exhibition, which some of you have seen, and if you have not, I encourage you to come and avail yourself of that opportunity, we will be opening, our newest exhibit will be opening on October the eighteenth, and it's called Black Citizenship in the Age of Jim Crow, which we think is very timely, and that will be a, a, a major opening and exhibit for us, of an, of an exhibition that was produced by the New York Historical Society, and we have a number of guest speakers coming and confirmed for that activity, including David Blight, who is the author of the new book on Frederick Douglass that just won the Pulitzer Prize for history, so we invite you to come to the institute and join with us in, in our continued efforts to promote and preserve civil and human rights, thank you, questions?
All right, thank you, Council Hoyer?
Yeah, that, that was a great report, and thank you for the work that you do, it's so important, and, and I'm glad that you and the board found it necessary to have such diversity, I think that's, you know, it's no different in the museum, you have to have it in order to, to be conscious about where we are and the climate that we're in, in these days, and the more that we can promote it, I think the better we can expect this society to be, and I don't make any apologies for race. And I don't make any apologies for racism, issue of diversity, because I think each one of us attached with that as we look at society as a whole. And if you have an opportunity to effectuate change, that's what we need to be doing. So I certainly appreciate that. And you mentioned Frederick Douglass, and I had an opportunity to go to his home in D.C. And one of the unique things is the ecosystem that he created in that house to take off water and, you know, different things he did with washing his clothes and all that stuff. But one of the unique things that I took away from that trip was, in those days when they rode the boxcars, if you were African-American, they put your luggage on the bottom, okay? And so that meant you had to wait until they got everybody else's stuff off. But Frederick Douglass had his trunk made in an oval shape, so therefore, they couldn't put nothing on top of it. And so he'd be sitting there waiting to get his luggage off first. So that was smart of him. And a lot of folks don't know that, but you need to go to Frederick Douglass Museum, his house and museum. And that was just, I said, that was ingenious. But you know Frederick Douglass wasn't ashamed of who he was and what he did. He effectuated change in America, and he's a part of American history. So I'm gonna be excited to go to the museum. I hadn't been there in a little minute, but I'm going over there. And A.G. Gaston is definitely worth celebrating. Anytime we can celebrate that, gentlemen. Thank you.
Counselor Woods?
Thank you. Wanted to ask, you mentioned this, I didn't catch it all, wanted to, if you could revisit, why all the terms are not the same?
Well, we, we looked at vacancies that were already in place, and we looked at the schedule for the people who resigned. And we were, as I mentioned earlier, I think, we were trying not to have everyone roll on and off at the same time, so that the transition to new members would not be complete, you know, you wouldn't have, everybody in the room is new. We wanted to have a mix of people who had some experience, as well as new people coming in. So in general, the philosophy is to stagger the terms roughly a third, a third, and a third, so that you constantly have a cadre of people who have been there and who understand the issues, and you're bringing in new people with new energy and new ideas. And I think that's generally true for all of these boards.
Well, yeah, what I'm looking at is they're all the same except for one. And I guess you have, you have the ability to go up to 27 seats. You intend to do that in the future?
No, again, as I mentioned, our target, we think, is 21. We're already going to be challenged if we have more than that, just to fit in the boardroom. We have to figure out where we're gonna put them. We'll have to move our meetings. But on a, you know, more substantive note, we think that 21 is probably a good number for good governance and have enough people with enough diversity and points of view and skills to staff our committees and to carry forward the mission and mandate of the institute.
Okay. Yeah, I was just concerned, because like I said, they're all the same except one.
So the clerk may want to speak to that, because they did the calculation on how the spread would be. And this is what we were given to work with. So I don't know, Mr. Fraser, if you want to comment on that?
Ms. Dees?
I'm sorry?
Ms. Dees? Speak to it.
Okay, Counselor, I'm Leitha Dees, and I serve as the deputy city clerk. And going through the entire list of board members for the Civil Rights Institute, because there are, there are, there are other members on the board that will eventually come back, which is where you'll see the stagger. So these are not all of the members that will be on the board, there's actually some other members as well. In this particular group, the appointees, they are new members to the board. Originally, we talked of replacing some of the people who actually resigned, but in order to increase the number of members, they, these people had actually agreed to serving three full years. So they're filling some of those vacant positions on the board that have never been filled. Again, it still won't bring you up to 27, but it does get closer to the 21. When the other board members come back, there are other, like I said, there are other positions that have to either be reappointed or replaced, then you'll see that stagger. But it just so happens that this is, this group is a large group of brand-new members. And so all of them are following into the three-year term. That's why you see so many ending in 2022. But the others will have different dates, once they come back to the board, oh, once they come back before the council for confirmation. So that's why those vacant positions, they don't start out as staggered, they're all three-year terms, they have never been filled. And so they're automatically gonna be three years, and that's why you've got so many at 2022.
So, let me see if I can kind of intervene. So can we be, can you provide us with an entire list of the current board members that are serving and when their terms expire?
Yes, sir.
So then you'll see a complete package of all the terms and all the members that are currently on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when their dates, will that help you?
Right, so with the appointment of these 18 members, how many other members do you have that are not listed?
Everybody's here. They're all here.
What other members are you referring to that are coming back?
There are some numbers listed on the board of directors, whose terms have expired previously, but they were just never confirmed. They never officially were confirmed for reappointment or replacement, according to our records, that never came to the city council at this point, that are going to have to be brought up to date.
Okay, let me, let me see where I think I can see faces up here. Can we perhaps, just table this to the end of the meeting, try to get a little bit more clarification, and just address it before, if we move to table this item? Yeah.
Can I ask my question before we table?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Okay, okay.
Because there might be more questions.
Okay.
My question from Ms. Taylor, and thank you for the tour a few weeks ago, I really enjoyed it. My question is, I had the same question about everybody expiring at the same time. If your intent is to have 20 members total, this is 18 of those 20 members, so my question was, is it a good idea to have an even number, where you could have a 10 to 10 vote, or is that a, could that be a problem, having an even number of members on the board?
That's a good point, that we hadn't really anticipated in that, in that regard. Again, we were thinking more about just how much absorptive capacity with the new group. I will say that, you know, without going back to the drawing board, the, at least the sheet that I have, that Cooper, Houston, Markstein, Oros, Porter, and Wilder are all currently board members, and they're all, you know, they're returning, or they're extending into a three-year term. Cooper is in a, is in a category separate and apart, but he had a one-year term, he, it expired. We thought he had been re-refered, and that was not the case. And so he is being nominated for a one-year term and will then be eligible to serve another full three-year term.
Let me ask you this real quick, because if I could ask a question.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
So Cooper, is he currently on a expired term or still serving within a term?
He's on an expired term.
Okay. But is there room to put him to a three, yeah, when we table this, we'll have a conversation. We'll move and table, we'll move the table after President Abbott finishes her questions, and then we'll, we'll, we'll get together.
So you're not gonna vote on this?
No, 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 no. What we're doing is we're, we're, we're gonna make a motion when President Abbott finishes her questioning to table the item until the end of the council meeting. We still have a couple of items, which will give us an opportunity to try to provide, request some information from the clerk's office, which we then would bring back to the council after probably public, the public speaks, and then the council makes their announcement. So that'll give us a little time to work through some things, and then we will come back, and President Abbott, to let her know that we can address item 35.
Yeah, and my other two questions.
Okay.
At some point, will you develop staggered terms so that you don't have everybody leaving at the same time? And the other question was, I think you skipped over Yolanda Clayton when you were going through who everybody was and what they, what they brought to the table. At least I somehow didn't write it down. And so can you tell us about Yolanda Clayton?
She is, I don't have her resume in front of me. She is an academic.
Yeah, let me, yeah, let me, I can do it for you. Yes, ma'am. And I'll just pinch it for her. She's currently with, doing work with Alabama State and Alabama A&amp;M in the disadvantaged business entity, business consultant. And she's been there since 2011.
Okay.
And I have her.
No, that's good. I just, I just wanted to write just a little brief thing down about each one of them, and she went through and told us everybody except that one.
Okay, all right, okay. But if you'll allow us an opportunity before the end of the council meeting to get some additional information.
Okay, so we're ready for our motion to table.
Trying to see why we hijacking this?
No, 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 we're, no, no, we're just tabled, because Counselor Woods wanted just to get the full list. We're gonna come back before the end of the meeting, we're just trying to get the list of information, that's all. We're gonna move, we're gonna, we're gonna take some action today, sir. We're just trying to get the list. Sir?
I said I'm all about the balance.
Oh, no, we're gonna make sure it's addressed and get it handled today. I was just trying to make sure that where we could get everyone could have some additional information, so.
So I'll take my seat and?
Yes, ma'am, just wait for it.
So motions? Do we have a motion?
A motion, just a table.
Second, I'll take it.
Be nominated, sir.
Aye.
All opposed.
So that item is tabled, and we will move to our next item.
Okay, give me one second. Forty-four has been withdrawn, so we will move to communications from the clerk. Item 72, which is on page 42. Receipt from Hawkins, Entricken, appealing the suspension of an application of warrant capital for the bill out of additional storage units at the self-storage facility operated by Cube Smart Brand and located at 5600 Port of Madrid Boulevard, Birmingham, and setting an appeal hearing, the regularly scheduled meeting of the city council on September the 3rd, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. in the city council chamber, 3rd floor, city hall, according to ordinance number 19-86. And then you have the emergency in item 73, the emergency repair notice from the purchasing agent relative to the emergency at Bateman at Fire Station Number 27. And then you have addendum item 74, the resolution authorizing the city attorney to request an official state of Alabama attorney's general opinion to clarify the powers and restrictions related to the city's authority to contract with the owner of solar power generating equipment for the purchase of electricity produced by said equipment, and to authorize the city attorney to prepare and execute all documents necessary to obtain said opinion. Motion.
Move the item.
Second. That was Dr. O'Quinn and Counselor Alexander.
All right, item is before you.
We are ready to vote.
Oh, thank you, babe.
Counselors. Parker, down. Okay.
That item passes?
Okay, Madam President, before we go to Speaker of Old and New Business, I need an item under Old and New Business, actually, to dealing with the storage facility because of the timeframe. The date was kind of off, so I need to put this one on the record, so that the hearing can happen next week.
Boo to reconsider?
We don't need to reconsider. I just need to read it into the record for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Just like the other one that we just did. Receipt from Ferris Marie Properties LLC, doing business as Ferris Properties and its wholly-owned subsidiary, Second Avenue Properties LLC, for its development of a climate-controlled storage facility at its property located at 1716 Second Avenue North, Birmingham, and setting a hearing, excuse me, for September the 3rd, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. in the council chamber, 3rd floor, city hall, and according to the ordinance number 19-86. So that one will also appear with the one I just read with you.
Okay, so we'll have two hearings on self-storage on September?
Yes, ma'am. It's because of the 14-day requirement, so we need to move this one back to the next week.
Okay, thank you. We are ready for a suspension of the rules for our public speakers.
So, ma'am?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you got the list? I have it, I'm sorry. First speaker is Timothy Huffman.
Yes, sir, please pull the microphone close to you so we can hear you.
I got you. Well, good afternoon, everyone, again. My name is Timothy Huffman. I'm a recent graduate of Miles College and also pursuing my master's in business at U W A. So the reason why I'm here, excuse me, Official Clutch Band, we are hosting a Veterans Day concert on November the 1st of this year from 6:00 p.m. to 9:30, and it will be held at the Purpose Center at Dannen Project. And the purpose of this occasion is to honor all veterans for their service in the city of Birmingham. And we will provide music, entertainment, comedy, door prizes, and dinner for all veterans at no cost. Last year, last year, Official Clutch Band Veterans Day concert was a huge success, and we have received many requests to, for the return for this year's Veterans Day event. And we had a total of 300 persons to attend this special event, and we would like to see this occasion grow annually. We, we would like for you to participate in our endeavor to honor our veterans by giving us a donation, and your donation will ensure that your business will be included on our printed program. And last year, we also partnered with Veterans Administration. We actually had six blind veterans to attend, so do I have any questions?
I've heard the band, they're excellent, Madam President.
Good, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Madam President, I did want to just add, in your package, you did give us a breakdown of the ask, correct? Is that what you're requesting?
Yes, yes, it includes the expenses, the purpose, and all the other details that you need to know.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
We have Creola Gaston Lucas. Ms. Lucas?
Creola.
Creola Gaston Lucas.
My name is Creola Gaston Lucas, and I'm here today to kind of reinstate something I've done previously. I've written several letters to the city council here at Birmingham, and I got a reply on the renaming of the Fifth Avenue North. I got a dedication for that site to be named A.G. Gaston Boulevard, but only just for dedication. But my request and a letter written to the mayor of Birmingham, and I also have written several other council members, I think I see a few that are present here this morning or this afternoon. Probably some of you haven't gotten my letters yet, but I decided to leave the computer this morning, this afternoon, and come down in person to ask of you to consider renaming the Fifth Avenue to my great and late grandfather, A.G. Gaston. Councilman Hoyt just mentioned the Frederick Douglass home and the significance of it. And it is a significant that he also mentioned my grandfather, A.G. Gaston, not to be forgotten. Fifth Avenue is not a long boulevard. It's, I guess it runs as far as the, I think, the post office, I think it ends in that area. So it's not a long request to ask for the change of that name. Now, Dr. Gaston served the city of Birmingham for over eight decades. He had He had businesses established that helped many families, uh, banks and hotels and business colleges and real estate companies and, uh, nursing homes and many more, too many to even mention. And he was a servant to the city of Birmingham, and I think he's really worthy of having his street named after him. Um, he's a great contributor to the citizen, uh, civil rights era. As a matter of fact, uh, Martin Luther King, uh, was welcomed at his hotel to stay there, to conduct their businesses there, and he also paid to, um, get Martin Luther King out of jail and some of the other citizens that participated. So I'm here on behalf of the A.G. Gaston senior family. My name is Creola Gaston Lucas. I'm one of his five grandchildren, and, uh, we're very proud of what he, uh, contributed to Birmingham and to the nation. And I'm requesting again, if Fifth Avenue North would be named the A.G. Gaston Boulevard in honor of my late grandfather, A.G. Gaston. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you, uh, Councilor Alexander, your name is, uh, is it?
That's my previous.
Okay, um, Councilor Hoyt?
Yes, um, thank you, Ms. Lucas, for coming to us, and I, I don't think it's gonna be as intrusive as we might figure, because I think most of those businesses take on the, um, the streets that are perpendicular to their location, so, um, and I know there, we got several financial institutions that own there, but they take Twentieth Street as their address as opposed to Fifth Avenue. So, um, and I would like to, uh, ask if the administration can do, could see how many businesses would be affected by that. Uh, but I think it's, it's worthy to have a street, uh, named after him. Uh, he did a great work, and matter of fact, I, um, um, over the years, I, you know, when I was approached to help A.G. Gaston Construction Company at one point, when, uh, Mr. Holland and others, you know, were living at that time, and, and I was a little upset because, um, you know, some of the folks, uh, sold the, the station, sold, and I just, that really just, you know, damaged my understanding of what history is really all about. And so I was really upset, but then they convinced me I needed to try to be an advocate for them again or whatever, and I did so. Um, and I'm glad because, uh, Walter was able to recover and to, you know, continue some things. But I was really upset that Kurt Wood and all those other folk sold that company, and, and he was very gracious in that he allowed them to, to take stock in the company before he died, thinking that they would, uh, you know, the company would be in perpetuity, you know, uh, in terms of what, and when, just when the A.G. Gaston, uh, construction, it was everything, his empire that he convened. And so that really concerned me, and, um, but, and matter of fact, I, uh, Sunday, I kinda preached about that. It's not for sale. And, um, and so everything is not for sale. And I just think what a great honor it would be for us to consider Fifth Avenue. I think that's, that's appropriate, and, um, and incidentally, you may not know, but my, my father, uh, before he died, lived there, he, he died as a resident of the A.G. Gaston, it turned into the apartment. So I have an akin to, to the A.G. Gaston, that's why I took care of him up until the point he died. Uh, he was living there, and I was a student at Miles College, so I do appreciate you coming before you, and, uh, and I think I did your, your renewing of your vows, what, about fifty years?
Amen, you did. He, he, I'm sorry, it's councilman, but...
That's right.
Councilman Hart remarried me on my fiftieth anniversary.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Yes, he certainly did an excellent job, we appreciate that.
So, you know, I'm gonna be fighting for your sister, so just know. But I think all of us really need to consider that, and if we can get some kinda, uh, assessment, chief, on how many businesses actually, uh, have the address of Fifth Avenue, uh, it should be, should, should be a no-brainer for us, quite frankly.
Thank you, Councilor Hoyt. And my recollection was that some time ago, we determined that we would not rename streets, we would simply dedicate them, and there's a formal process for street dedications. But I do think that, um, investigating to find out how many businesses would be affected was a good idea. So thank you, just, thank you very much for coming.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you all.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Terry Boyd, I said thirty-nine forty-four, L.A., North. I'm kinda concerned about the neighborhood president that do not stay in the neighborhood. They put her in the office. When we ran for election in October, she's currently staying in Tarrant and not in East Birmingham. By, by law, they said, if the president don't stay in the neighborhood, they're not qualified to run in the neighborhood. So she's staying in Tarrant, and she, and we talked to the people downstairs in community development to investigate it, but they haven't gave us a word. We gave her address that she did thirteen twenty-five, uh, Spring Street and Tarrant. And they said they wasn't gonna investigate, but we ain't hear no word from her yet. So we come here today to see if y'all can investigate that situation, that this president do not stand at East Birmingham. She hasn't stayed there since March eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, and they still allow her to be the president of the neighborhood, Deborah DeRamos, that's her name.
Deborah DeRamos, okay.
Thank you. I, I have to assume that the mayor's office is handling that, um, since the council does not have purview. But I'm, I got a nod from Chief Sparks. It takes a while to prove where people live.
We know, she claims she stay at ten fifteen Cohibbs Street, but she don't stay there. Because we living in the neighborhood, and we know where Cohibbs Street is, and we around there every day, so we know she ain't there.
We know, we know the people in the neighborhood know.
Yes.
But, but they still have to go through a process, so give them a little time, come back and see us if nothing happens.
We've been doing this here since February of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Since February.
Thank you. February. Next speaker.
Is it Herman Henderson?
Herman Henderson, I think that's what that's supposed to say. It looks like hen heard. So, Mr. Henderson, you're gonna have to improve your signature.
Thank you, President.
You don't wanna be hen heard, that's just not so cool.
Well, you know, right like a doctor, so it's hard to understand. I have some major issues on some things, but first of all, let me just start out by saying, thank the, uh, the mayor's office and the Don Lupo for, uh, the eulogy of the three young people that got burnt up in Wildom. I would have thought that some of the councilmen would have attended the funeral, because that was a very important, uh, event that took place in the Wildom area. I wanna thank the pastor, Beth the Baptist, for allowing us to come in there to do the eulogy in that church. And I wanna thank the mayor's office for, the police office that he used to come out there to escort the funeral, and also Don Lupo for all the food that he allowed the family to eat, and also Councilman Williams. But that's a major issue that I just not see the councilers taking up, and I got back involved. I, I didn't wanna run for neighborhood, uh, councilman, because that's not my thing, because I'm better fighting on the outside. I wanna thank God for being with Councilman Sheila Tyson, Judge Buuhacker on yesterday, to deal with the issue that I would have thought that the councilmen would have really made this affront run. When they were deciding to move the parole and the probation office out to Shelby County on the outskirts of Birmingham, of Hoover. And all boys that's on parole and probation had nowhere of transportation to be able to go all the way out to Hoover. And I want to know that if the mayor wanna copy the tape, I give it to him. We sat down with the parole board, me and Sheila Tyson, and I wanna give my hats off and kudo to the district attorney, Danny. I wanna give his hats off to the new sheriff, he worked real hard with this, and Clyde Jones. But especially Judge Buuhacker, when he gave us instruction how to go get it. I was appreciative to see Sheila Tyson and myself on a conference call with the board, parole board on yesterday, how that, we hear a lot of things in the community that, oh, they doing this and they doing that, and I really firm believe that if the mayor had a real eyes or knew that these peoples moved the parole office president because their time was running out, and they was getting charged twenty thousand dollars a month, and the man would not release, renew the lease. So their back was against the wall, and the real estate company was in charge of finding a spot with fifteen thousand square feet, so they can put the parole board in that particular building. And it's amazing how black peoples are treated. It's amazing how we treat black peoples. And you know, when we talked to the parole board, Stephen Hart, and it's all on tape here, and our video, me and Sheila Tyson, he said, sir, it wasn't like that. We couldn't find nowhere to go, he said there was no place in Birmingham. But Danny Carr and the new sheriff, and Clyde Jones began to step in the picture. And they said, you can use the bottom of the courthouse. And me and Sheila Tyson got on the phone, and we worked this thing, and we worked this thing on yesterday, and they trying to renegotiate a contract to bring it back, to keep it in Birmingham. I just left Jefferson County. Do y'all know how important this is for your black boys that in the penetration? Do y'all know how important it is for African-American men that don't have funds and have to catch buses and couldn't get out of there? But the parole board director said, we are willing to do what's necessary, Councilman, Commissioner Tyson, if y'all can find us a spot. So they gonna allow them to use Jefferson County, and I'm hoping that the mayor's office ended. Hear this, 'cause I believe the strongest voice of this city is the mayor. I hope that y'all would get with Clyde Jones, district attorney Danny Carr, and Sheila Tyson, and let's get a place permanent, hard, for all boys. It's already been worked out with the parole board, they are satisfied with it, they're not gonna do nothing, we temporarily gonna use the, the bottom of the courthouse. This shit'll never happen. We, we, we putting signs up in folks' yards. This shit'll never happen. We want people to vote for y'all. This shit'll never happen. I'm not a politician, but I promise you, you're not going to come in the black community and keep locking up my boys, keep locking up my black men, and nobody say nothing about it. I like you. You, I really like you, President. Let me tell you why I like you. I like you because when I first met you, you was the only Caucasian that went to every neighborhood meeting in the black community, when blacks wouldn't even go, you was at every meeting. That's why I like you. I like you, Stephen Hart, because you stood up for blacks contractors. And when nobody gonna say nothing, and I'm saying to the mayor's office, please get with district attorney Danny, please get with Clyde Jones. Judge Buuhacker gave us the rope to go after these people, to make sure this place do not be moved. This is important to us, you council members, please, get on board. Let's keep this thing in Birmingham. And I know that's a place, president, where that's fifteen thousand square feet. That's all they need is fifteen thousand square, the real estate people, there's no way in Birmingham they can put it. But as of yesterday, they's not gonna make a move on it. I thank y'all for listening to me, this is not a rebuke, this is a concern, and let's be concerned about our community.
Wait, 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 we have two speakers, Councilor Hoyt and Dr. O'Quinn.
Yeah, well, and, uh, Reverend Henderson, let me thank you for coming, because, uh, I just had this discussion with Jonathan Austin on his, uh, program, Knowledge is Power, on Sunday evening, and I thought what a travesty this would be if we did that, and, 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 and I also contributed to transportation. You know, transportation is a challenge in this city as we speak. You know, they cutting and diminishing routes as we speak. And so if persons are transit-dependent and they on probation, then that makes it even greater for them. And so, but also, you know, I, I read the newspaper, I read it online, I don't read the newspaper, I read, uh, read, read it online, that they considering five bids for new prisons. Well, you know, if you don't make your probation, guess what they gonna do? They gonna send you back to prison, so you can repopulate these new prisons that they building and what have you. And so it is a travesty, and I said the same thing you said, that this need to be led by the mayor of this city, because a goodly portion of our citizens, uh, or, or, you know, that, that in that probation system, uh, live in Birmingham proper. And so, and so we, we really have to do that, but I'm glad that Commissioner...
Can I just, just listen to something for a minute? I want you to listen. I want you to listen to this man, the parole.
I think that's something that you need to look into. I know you, I know you, you, uh, unless you make decisions like that on your own, but what we trying to...
Well, this, this is, and this is another issue that, that, that's creating disorder.
We clear.
And that's the parole man.
Well, and, and, and let me thank you, let me thank Commissioner, um, Tyson and Danny Carr and, um, uh, our new sheriff, uh, Petway, and Judge Jones, because that's important. Um, and, you know, and I, uh, assume, uh, well, I work with the, uh, with reentry, and so I know how important that is, you know, and, and let me tell you, it's a challenge, because when working with Danning, the Danning Project, uh, that was one of the biggest things, is, you know, these folk having a hard time getting there, uh, to, to, to and fro, and so to move into another county where you don't have the frequency of the bus going there, that just come, I mean, you, you just asking for a travesty. You know, you asking for, you know, um, something to go off and what have, because if they can't get there, they gonna get me put back in jail. And so, and maybe, maybe, I see the senator out there, I wanna obligate him, but, you know, maybe we need something to say that the probation officer has to be in the inner city. Yeah, I think that's something this state legislature could do. And I say that because when HUD moved to Homewood, if you remember, Senator, people were complaining that they couldn't get there because the bus didn't necessarily run there, and the bus only, uh, let off on Valley Avenue, so they had to walk up that big old hill to get to HUD. And the Justice Department came in, I mean, the Office of, uh, Management came in and said, listen, no, it needs to be back, and they brought it back in the city, so people, what, can get there. Social Security, same thing, uh, ATF and all those, that's why those, uh, facilities are brought back in there, 'cause that's part of government is being accessible to the people. And, and, and of course, uh, in Shelby County, it's, that's, that's not accessible.
Thank you, Councilor Hoyt.
So I really appreciate it, great, great, great comments today.
Dr. O'Quinn?
Yes, thank you, um, so, um, unfortunately, I, I think I found out about this like a lot of other folks, um, through social media, I, you know, no, no one came to us ahead of time and, uh, asked us for our input. But that being said, uh, I wanna make a couple of suggestions for potential locations that might work, and, uh, both of which have, the city of Birmingham has some input on. So the first location is in the twenty-one hundred block of Fifth Avenue North. It's the old Cash Connection Building that the city of Birmingham actually owns. Um, and there's a transit stop right in front of the building. Uh, the other is immediately adjacent in the public parking deck, um, right across the street from the Redmont. There are, uh, commercial space on that first level, on the sidewalk level, that has been for lease for ever since that parking deck was built. The, the BPA has had that space out for lease. It, they have not leased it to anyone, it's been vacant for a long time. Um, so I think either one of those locations, they're centrally located, there's a transit stop immediately right there. Um, those specific locations would probably work well for this function.
And I think he's right, Councilman, and, you know, they pay twenty thousand dollars a month at the least they was in, they had moved to Shelby County, got a month and free, they had to sign a four-year agreement, but they're willing, they're willing to come back if someone can, you know, find a better spot. I mean, they don't want, they don't want this to be as bad as people say it is, Councilman Hart. They wanna, they wanna do right. They say they just couldn't find nowhere to go. The, the real estate people couldn't find nowhere, and we thought that was a joke.
Yeah.
And so I brought it to you all, because I know y'all have a stronger voice, and you all can get with Councilman, I mean, uh, with Clyde Jones, uh, and, 'cause y'all voice is stronger than mine, and y'all can work it out. is stronger than mine, and y'all can work it out. I can only just bring you this information. He talked the good to us, but I know y'all got a strong of voice and he gonna tell you, he gonna send you the email, everything that he gave to the commission office, like I talked to Sean Scaler this morning. You know, it, it need to be in Birmingham. And I think though, and I think I heard something about the 21, and I just want the mayor to follow up on it, for whatever it worth, to make sure we keep it like Stephen Hart said. I thank y'all for listening to-
Well, thank you, Mr. Henderson, for letting us know because the state of Alabama does not consult with the city of Birmingham before they make their decisions and do their business. And I think all of us found out about it by accident rather than on purpose. I heard a parole officer complaining that he had been moved to Shelby County, you know, from his office downtown, and that was how I found out about it. So the state of Alabama, you know, they operate in a, in their own world, but thank you for letting us know.
And give to Clyde Jones some credit. He decided to let them put it in the basement of the courthouse until they come up with a permanent decision. So let's give him some, y'all, preach out to him.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That was our last public speaker. We are, we can go back to our tabled item.
If you could just give us a couple more minutes, if we could maybe do the announcements and old and new business.
Okay, well, we can do old and new business.
Okay.
So we'll start with Councilor O'Quinn and head that way.
Okay, give me a second. I just need a minute.
If, if you're-
I see the paper.
Okay, I'm, I'm ready. Okay, so tonight, the Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet at 6:00 PM at the Fountain Heights Rec Center. The Smithfield Community is also meeting. That, that includes, Smithfield Community includes the neighborhoods of College Hills, East Thomas, Enon Ridge, Graymont, and Smithfield. So the Smithfield Community is meeting tonight at 6:00 PM at the Parker High School in the community building adjacent to the baseball field. Also, tonight, the Crestwood North Neighborhood Association meets at 6:30 PM at Girls Inc. On Monday, due to the Labor Day holiday, the College Hills Neighborhood Association will not meet on September 2nd. They are rescheduling their meeting to the following Monday at, on September 9th, at the regularly scheduled time. And last but not least, Happy Labor Day to everyone. Enjoy the holiday, but please be safe. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. O'Quinn. Councilor Alexander.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just have two quick announcements for District 7. I do want to acknowledge the presence of our Industrial Center Neighborhood Association President, Ms. Valora Elder. I believe that's her sister next to her. Thank you very much. We appreciate you attending. Those are fellow dragons, so thank you. Also, I do want to thank the Royal Company of Women who allowed me to be their featured speaker at their breakfast last week. And so I thank them for that honor, and I also thank them for selecting me as an honorary as well. So thank you. If you will allow me, Madam President, I did get the District 9 announcements, but you'll allow me to say no. So it is District 9 time. Is that what he says? So-
Change your voice.
But anyway, just to start, he did want us to acknowledge, we've already acknowledged the birthday of our fellow counselor, Clinton Woods. And Mr. Hill, you'd also wanted to acknowledge the birthday of a prominent neighborhood leader, Ms. Tammy Smith. I think most of us know Tammy. She often comes and shares with us during Community Voices, and she has a birthday this Thursday, August 29th. These are the following neighborhood meetings that will be held in the district. The Dolomite Neighborhood will meet tonight at the Westfield Community Center, and that's at 6:00 PM. The Smithfield Community Meeting will be held tonight at 6 o'clock at Parker High School. And there are two meetings that are scheduled for Monday, so I'm not sure if these are being changed or not, but they are on schedule for the Sherman Heights Neighborhood Association. They're, they are meeting at the Morning Star Baptist Church at 5:30. And then the Central Pratt Neighborhood is scheduled to meet on Monday at 6:00 PM at the House Sanford Recreation Center. Those are announcements for District 7 and 9. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Smithelman.
Thank you, Madam President. As far as neighborhood meetings, next Tuesday, September 3rd, Oakwood Place will meet at Harrison Park at 4:00 PM. Announcements cleaning up District 6 will happen this Saturday in South Tisville. We will meet at the Supershine Car Wash, which is 51 Sixth Avenue Southwest. It will begin around 8:00. The PIC meeting was scheduled for next Tuesday, September 3rd, but because of the holiday weekend, there will be a special called PIC meeting, which will be held on September 10th at 2:00 PM in Conference Room E. And everyone, don't forget about the District 6 Town Hall meeting with the mayor. We encourage residents to come out and get information about what's going on in the, in the city and District 6. And also, this is a time for the constituents to talk to the department heads one-on-one and talk about your concerns. This isn't a debate or anything like that. This is just to hear you guys' concerns and issues. And this Sunday, September 1st, the Tisville Knights baseball team will have their awards banquet at Club M, located at 521 Third Avenue West, starts at 2:30 PM. I was one of the sponsors to help with their banquet. And also, the District 6 office will be giving school supplies to Holy Family, Hemp Hill, and Washington schools throughout the week. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilor Hoyt.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Tonight, the Bush Hill Neighborhood Association will meet at 6:30 at Bush Hill. Domino's Pizza at the Crossplex is now open. Please mark your calendars for the 13th Annual Part of What the Purpose, which will be held on Saturday, October 5th, at, at the Enslay Park from 11 to 3 o'clock. And also, that's Miles Homecoming, Miles College Homecoming. And lo and behold, we're playing Clark Atlanta, where Dr. French is, is the new president over there. But we not taking any prisoners. We gonna put a beating on them like they never had before. So that's on the 5th. That's on the 5th. So that day, you come by Part of the Purpose first, and then you go out there and watch the game, Councilor Wood. Okay? And so y'all need to come out and support Miles. We have a new president and, and the person of Ms., Dr. Bobby Knight, and somebody swear, where she, she got, he has a Jewish doctorate degree from, from Birmingham School of Law. And so we can call her doctor. Isn't that right, Dr. Smithelman? Okay? We won't be calling her Dr. Philone, because she gonna be past that bar. And so, but we excited to have Dr. Bobby Knight as our 15th president, interim president of Miles College. And already, she has hit the ground running. She said that she would not be eating her dinner or lunch or whatever in the dining room, the faculty dining room. She said I'm gonna be eating with, with the, with the young people. And so that's already something that, you know, she's come, that's very intentional. And so we excited about what a Knight administration would do for Miles College. I think we are poised to go to the next level. And I had already shared with the bishops and other folk that I really thought that Miles really needed somebody in the business community to take us to the next level. And so I want to thank Bishop Snorton, Jefferson Snorton, and the entire trustee board, which I'm a part, who voted to unanimously to, to make her the interim president of Miles College. She is the first woman to ever held, hold that position, and, and we looking forward-
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. That's right. I'm raising a daughter. I've been married for 29 years to a woman, just one woman.
And you love all your female colleagues.
And I love, I love all the women in my life. I preach to women. And, and so it's a great day for women. And so I celebrate them as I celebrate my own in my little space that I'm in. And so we looking forward to Dr. Knight and what she brings to the table, her business acumen that we so desperately need to take us to that next level.
Thank you, Councilor Hoyt.
All right. Can I go? No, I can't.
Councilor Woods, we, we got, we just may as well finish our, our old and new business and then get our addenda, our tabled item, our... Councilor Woods.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. A few announcements. The East Precinct Police of the East Precinct will be having coffee with a cop tonight at 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Wendy's on the Parkway. Also, I want to point out, today kicks off the basic EMT program at North Star EMS. We were able to partner with North Star to basically provide four scholarships, opportunities for individuals to go through that basic EMT training. That gives opportunities to get that certification and get started on that career path, so we're excited to kick that off today and look forward to them obtaining that credential and, and being able to take on jobs there in that high-demand area. Also, on Friday, we were able to kick off the District 1 Be Litter Free campaign. We're approaching that in three ways. And so what we're doing is an educational push to make sure people know and understand what the result is when you litter, when you dump in your community, when, you know, you strap signs to poles and stop signs, and so what that does by devaluing the area, inviting crime and other things. And so we want to educate. We're also looking at working on strengthening the ordinance so there's a little bit more punitive response tied to individuals that actually do dump items or litter in the community. And then lastly, we're establishing a District 1 litter crew, which will supplement what the city's already doing, but just give us more manpower going out on a regular basis to clean up some of the hotspots and remove some of those signs off of posts and poles. And so excited about that, the Be Litter Free campaign. Stay tuned for more information about how you can participate. And that concludes the District 1 announcements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. President Pro Tim Parker.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to wish everybody Happy Labor Day and want everyone to come out to the game on Tues, I mean, on Thursday for UAB Alabama State. So that concludes my report. I know that Mr. Jenkins had some information, but we'll, we'll get with that next week, okay? All right. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. And I just have some fairly brief announcements. I want to thank the city council security officers, Charles Lewis and George Sampson. Thank you for keeping us safe today. Wanted to remind everybody that the World Games are coming to town in 2021, and we have to be ready. We have to raise some more money. I wanted to say farewell to Sally Mackin, who has done a fabulous job at the Woodlawn Foundation, and she's going to California now to pursue the rest of her dreams. And we, she did a great job while she was here. We'll miss her. But she told me she was making room for a new person to have the same opportunity she had. So I thought, that's a nice way of saying, I'm making room for someone else. UAB opened its university hall building that they just completed. It is a fabulous building. It is where the College of Arts and Sciences is going to be located, along with foreign languages and seemingly half of everything else. They said that almost all students at UAB would walk the halls of that new building, which is beautiful. The sidewalk film center and cinema, it didn't get to be the center of everything this weekend, but sidewalk was great, even with the huge rainstorm and, and the gentle mist that was falling on us as we wandered the streets looking for movies. It was great. Next budget and finance meeting will be held on Monday, September 9th at 3:30 PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Agenda submissions are due on September 4th by noon, or sooner, if you can get it there sooner. Redmont Park meets tonight. They have an important and controversial rezoning issue, so I hope people can attend. It's at 6:00 PM in the auditorium at the Botanical Gardens. Next Monday is a holiday, and so the Glen Iris Neighborhood has canceled their meeting for Labor Day and rescheduled to Monday, September 9th at 6:30 PM at the St. Elias Mary Night Catholic Church Meeting Room. Next Tuesday is the Forest Park South Avondale meeting at 6:30. And I wanted to recognize that Senator Smithelman is here with us today, watching vigilantly over our meeting to make sure no errant people come in. So we appreciate him being here today. I have in my hand travel authorizations, this is so I don't forget, because I was about to, travel authorizations for Councilor Warding Alexander and Jeffrey McDaniels. And the travel is at no cost. It's one-day travel, so we need to pass this with UC. So do I hear a motion?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Okay, so that passes, and if y'all will pass this on down that way and make sure the city clerk gets it. Now we are ready to go to our table, to move, remove our items from the table.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Taylor, if you want to come back up. What you have before you, the, the, the attachment that was in the Friday packet is the, is the, is the item that we're gonna work from what was passed out this morning, the revised one. We're gonna withdraw that one and work from the item that was in the packet that I passed out. And you'll see that it has some, some of the appointees' expiration dates a little different. I'll bring it to your attention. Adams, Burgess, and Dr. Beasley, terms will expire in 2021 as opposed to... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, move that we bring item 35.
Remove the item from the table.
Move the item, okay.
Aye. All opposed, okay?
We're good now? Okay. I was just trying to, okay, just explaining that there are three that will expire in So that kind of clears up the notion of all of them were, all of them were expired in 2022. So we were just working off of different documents, so just to oversight.
So we just ditched the revised agenda and go back to the agenda we got over the weekend?
Yes, ma'am.
And I had only the one that was the original. I had not seen or heard of the revised. So that's why I'm standing there looking at everybody asking.
It's okay. It's, it's-
My dear asking.
And then the, so the other thing is dealing with the fact that in order to make sure that there's not an even number, next week, there will be another item from, to make sure that they bring back, to make sure it's an uneven number, an odd number. So that will come back before us next Tuesday, so that'll address that, that matter. Okay? One other thing, Isaac Cooper, whose term expires September 1st, 2020, we're gonna strike his name from being considered today. He'll come back next week.
Unexpired.
Yeah, he'll, he'll come back next week. So you'll, he'll probably be replacing Walter Body, and then the, the alternate or next on their, from their pool will probably come in and then replace Isaac Cooper for a two-year term. So it's a, we're working through, we'll work through that over the next couple of days.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna move-
So this is what we're voting on, is the list that we originally received minus Isaac Cooper?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Okay. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, President Pro Tim Parker and Councilor Smithelman.
Okay. To be open. Counselor Member Parker.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, that item passes.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next week. Have a very safe and happy Labor Day.
I'm sorry you had to spend the day with us.
It's always a pleasure.
We are to the point where we can adjourn if someone will make a motion.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
We are adjourned. That was exciting.